All right. Terry, are you there?
Yes, I am.
All right. We will go ahead and get started. Madam Clerk, would you like to call roll?
Councilmember Brightegum?
Here.
Councilmember Deidre Nguyen?
Here.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yeah.
Councilmember Klaffenstein?
Here.
Councilmember Kim Nguyen?
Here.
Mayor Protem O'Neil?
Here.
Mayor Jones?
Here. Mayor Protem O'Neil may ask you to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. That'd be my pleasure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Okay. That takes us on to oral communications for all legislative bodies. Madam Clerk, do we have any cards?
Yes, we do. We have several cards and we also have several letters. So I'll start with the speakers tonight that are here in the chamber. And the first speaker, Nicholas Dibs.
Mayor Jones, members of the council. My name is Nicholas Dibs. I'm pleased to be here today. I want to speak in favor of item 3A on the agenda on tonight's council meeting agenda, approval of the Community Workforce Agreement. I graduated from Pacifica High School in the honors program and became a credentialed science teacher. And as a teacher, I am very much in favor of the Community Workforce Agreement, which includes a provision for establishing an apprenticeship and outreach program with local high school. It's important that our high school students be plugged in into the building trades and that we improve and increase community, that we improve and increase CTA career and technical education. And as some of you know, I ran for school board back in 2016. We need to increase our witch shops, auto shops, and our CTE programs, and this will fit right in. During this unprecedented time, we need to have planning, replanning, innovation, stamina, and courage to deal with the challenges that are before the city and the community. We need people that have ideas to help. Ideas from the community are necessary to help and are critically needed and are important. So I want to encourage the mayor and the council, as I've mentioned at the last two council meetings, to put together a task force, but not only a task force, but also to include input from the community members so that we can provide ideas to the council on how to best cope with the economic downturn ahead of us. Lastly, I want to mention, this would have been, this month would have been the eighth year in which the college, City of Garden Grove College graduates reception would have taken place under the leadership of Mayor Jones, who started it eight years ago. And we had to put that, that had to be put off. I've been a sponsor, the last, co-sponsor, the last three years. So I just want to say to the graduates of the class of 2020, both high school and college students, to encourage you to do the best you can. And someone once said, when you discover a job and a career you enjoy doing, you will never work a day in your life. My first recommendation and advice to you, the college graduates and high school graduates of the class of 2020, is to choose jobs and careers that you enjoy doing and that will also help make the world a better place. So I ask you to devote your approximate 80,000 hours of work hours in your career to help achieve much-needed positive change because it is the right thing for each of us and all of us to do. This means working to achieve a better future by helping others, your community, city, nation, and the world be better than you found it. This also means putting people's welfare and the greater good of individuals and humanity ahead of greed, corruption, and unfair and unethical results and outcomes. Thirdly, elections and who voters elect is very important. Therefore, I encourage all the young people to be sure to register to vote and to be sure to vote, become informed, and remain engaged in the political process, and perhaps even run for office. In closing, please read or Google Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s Beyond Vietnam speech and read that seven-page speech. And most importantly, do all and everything you can to devote and develop your life's precious time, work, and endeavors, helping others and yourself to help achieve a better future, community, nation, and world, very much in need of positive change and freedom with liberty and justice for all. Sincerely, Nicholas Dibs, former ASB officer, Pacifica High School. Do I have any remaining time left? One minute, okay. So I just want to encourage that to the young people and our class of 2020. And I also would like to mention that we're going to need, to get through this economic downturn, we're going to need to have innovation. We're going to need to have, think outside the box. I have brought up to the mayor in the past years, and at that time, our economy was doing pretty good, but I think this is the time for me to bring it up again and to mention that what we need is to follow the model example of the Bank of North Dakota. The Bank of North Dakota is a state charter bank, independent of the Federal Reserve, and they were able to weather the last economic downturn in '08, '09 because they could fund loans to community, targeted loans to the community, and the interest that they earn helped balance the budget. I think we need to follow what the City of Los Angeles tried to do, which was establish a city-chartered bank so that we can target loans to community businesses and projects that we need done in Garden Grove. So I want to ask the council to give some consideration here in the near future to having staff look into establishing a city-chartered bank, and the income from the bank can help balance the budget. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Nick. Madam Clerk?
Hi, John DeKleen, Mayor Jones, council members. Thank you for allowing me to come up here and speak. I am a West Garden Grove resident, and I'm here speaking on 3A, the Community Workforce Agreement. I'm a member of a trade, construction trade, and I'm in favor of this beyond the work. It's more about the life, the quality of life, you know, not having to drive two hours commuting to work and being able to spend more time with my family, being able to go to restaurants in my community with the money I'm making here in the community. It speaks to what this is exactly about. We should be hiring local people. Currently, there's construction going on in our neighborhood. The roads are getting done, sidewalks are getting done. And I've talked to some of those guys out there. They're not even from our neighborhood. They're from out of town, out of the county even. So this is one of those reasons why we should be supporting this. It goes beyond the work, like I said. The time that I get, if I'm working local, then I get to volunteer. I coach that Garden Grove pop owner. I mentored those young men, and a lot of them are graduating this year. So when we're able to not have to drive two hours each way, we get to spend more time in our community and doing stuff with our children in the neighborhood also. So like I said, I'm in support of this, and I appreciate your time. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, John. Terry, we got more?
Hello. I'm Mark DeKleen. I also live in West Garden Grove, and I'm also in IBW Electrical Trade. And I'm in favor of 3A because it'd be nice just to not have to drive so far for work every day also, and just to have to spend money in my community where I also live in.
Thank you, Mark. Terry, any others?
Hello, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, thank you for having me today and allow me to speak. My name is Israel Mosqueta, and I am a member of the IBW Local 441 in Orange County. I'm also a resident of West Garden Grove and a homeowner, and I'm here in support of the Community Workforce Agreement. My wife and I raise two children locally in the area and have health insurance and do okay. And, you know, I really owe that to the opportunity that I had to be in the IBW's apprenticeship program. Maybe getting into it, I really didn't know how fortunate I was until later in life when, you know, I could afford these things. And I just feel that it's a great opportunity for the youth of Garden Grove to be able to get in the, into these apprenticeship opportunities, not only with the IBW, but all of the building trades that are represented in this agreement. So, you know, when I go to East Gate Park on Thursday in the summertime, and I see all the youth that are out there that are about to be, you know, young adults, and, you know, I think of them and what they're going to do later in life, and I just hope that they have the same opportunity that I have, to be able to learn a trade that can really offer them a great future and good career locally here in Garden Grove. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Terry?
One last speaker from the chamber is Daisy Perez.
Good evening, Mayor Jones and members of the City Council. My name is Daisy Perez. I am the vice chair of the Planning Commission and a proud resident of District 5. I'm here today to urge the City Council to vote yes on item 3A. This item promotes local hires for city construction projects. Now more than ever, we need to focus our tax dollars and support our local residents and reinvest in our community. The voters passed Measure O to improve the quality of lives of Garden Grove residents, and this would be an opportunity to further enhance those goals. Therefore, I ask that you approve the CWA with the LAOC Building and Construction Trades Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Daisy.
Okay, so that was all the cards, right, Terry? But you have letters?
That is all the cards for the speakers in the chamber, and we received a lot of letters in support of item 3A, and I'll just go through briefly. These are all letters in support, and I'll just go through and give you the names of the individuals who sent the letters. And also just to let the public know that the City Council has received all of these letters via email. So the first letter in support of item 3A, which is the Community Workforce Agreement, is from Ron Miller, the executive secretary of the Los Angeles Orange County Building and Construction Trades Council, and Ernesto Medrano. He is the council representative. Congressman Louis Correa. Congressman Alan Lowenthal. State Senator of the 34th District, Thomas Umberg. Assemblyman, 72nd District, Tyler Deep. Ariana Estwagi, a Garden Grove resident of District 6. Samuel Hurtado, Orange County Business Representative. Rich Gomez, Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters, Vice President of Local 714. Antonio Velasquez, Special Representative of Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters. John Hannah, Governmental Affairs, Special Counsel, Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters. Samuel Becerra, Tinoco with Local 105. Douglas Mangion, he's a business representative and a political coordinator for the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, Local Union 441. Douglas Mangion of Local Union 441. David Young from the Cement Masons, Business Agent, Local 500, Area 523. The Teamsters, Local Union, Construction Business Representative, Caesar Borjas. Garden Grove resident, Otneel Pavia. David Zek, the president and CEO of Pacific Plumbing Company in San Ana. James Campbell, he's a member of the IBW Local 441 out of Orange County, and he resides in Garden Grove. Paul Moreno, he's a business agent for Ironworkers Local 433. Ricky Rios. He's also from 41. Twan Bowie, he's a resident of Garden Grove and a welder from Ironworker Local 433. Dale Plucker, he's a Garden Grove resident for over 40 years, and he is with the Local 105 Sheet Metal Workers. Eddie Peña is a business representative for Local 5. Doug Robbins, he is a Local 1136 Business Representative, Painters and Allied Trades, DC 36. Shelley Travis, a longtime resident of Garden Grove. And Mike Hawxworth, he is with the, he is the Fuel Oil Division Director of Pan Pacific Mechanical. And Michael Page, he is the HVAC Preconstruction Manager with Pan Pacific Mechanical. So those are all the letters that we received today in support of the Community Workforce Agreement. And then just moving forward, the last letters that we received are from various people regarding evictions. This has, this is a totally different subject. It's regarding evictions of Garden Grove's small businesses by V8 Investments LLC. And all of these later, all of the letters that you received, which I sent you via email, are all in support of a further moratorium on evictions. So I'll just read the names of the people who sent the letters. So we have Caesar Culver-Rubias, he's the Executive Director of the Kennedy Commission. Nigma Nguyen, he is an Asian American Studies minor, and he has his bachelor's in Biology from Pomona College, class of 2020. Lam Nguyen, he's a resident of Garden Grove. Adam Overton, he's a faith-rooted organizer in Orange County Clergy and Lady United for Michelle Saylor, she's the Executive Director of CLU, which is the Clergy and Lady United for Economic Justice. Jessica Deng, she's a resident of San Ana, and she is a former resident of Garden Grove. Elaine Lee, she is a resident of Garden Grove. And she's also from the Palmarage School of Business in Irvine. Tia Nguyen, she's a resident of Irvine. Kenny Tran, he's a resident of Garden Grove. Juan Lung, he's a resident of Garden Grove. Serena Huang, she is a resident of San Francisco. Christina Nguyen, she is the president of Marina High School's Chapter of Amnesty Carolyn Nguyen, she is a resident of Garden Grove. Alfred Yi, he is a resident of Seattle. And Ho Luang, he's a resident of Garden Grove. Daniel Vasquez, he's a resident of San Ana. And the last letter that I have is from Vivian Duong, and she's a resident of Longdale, California. And again, all of those letters were from people who are writing about evictions that were done by the V8 Investments LLC. And those, that concludes our oral communications.
Thank you very much. Okay, we will close our communications, and at this time, we will recess over to successor agency. Madam Clerk, would you like to call roll?
Member Brightegum?
Here.
Member O'Neil?
Here.
Member Deidre Nguyen?
Here.
Member Klaffenstein?
Here.
Member Kim Nguyen?
Here.
Vice Chair Bowie?
Yeah.
And Chair Jones?
Here. Okay, we already did oral communication simultaneously with City Council. Moves on to consent items. Simply item 2A, receive and file the minutes. Can I get a motion in a second?
Move.
O'Neil, move.
Uh, Brightegum, O'Neil.
Thank you.
Roll, roll call vote, please.
Member Brightegum?
Here.
Member Brightegum?
Yes.
Member O'Neil?
Yes.
Member Deidre Nguyen?
Yes.
Member Klaffenstein?
Yes.
Member Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bowie?
Yes.
And Chair Jones?
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Okay, takes us on to matters. Any matters from successor agency members? Okay, seeing none, we will adjourn back to City Council. And that takes us to consent items. Recommended that items 2A through 2K be acted on simultaneously unless anyone would like to pull any items. Do I have any requests to pull?
Brightegum?
Assistant Manpap Bowie would like to pull item 2H regarding steel craft.
2H, yeah. Okay. George?
I was going to pull the same one.
Okay. Any other items to pull? Seeing none, can I get a motion in a second for the balance?
Move the balance.
O'Neil, move.
Move it.
Second, Stephanie Klaffenstein.
O'Neil and Klaffenstein. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Brightegum?
Yes.
Councilmember Deidre Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Klaffenstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Protem O'Neil?
Yes.
Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All righty, that takes us back to item 2H, as pulled by Councilmember Bowie.
Mayor and colleagues, the reason that I would like to pull that is because I, when it was first introduced, it had 18 years, I mean, 18 months, I'm sorry. Even though it is now changed to 12 months, but I'm still, after talking to constituents in the city, many still have a lot of concern about it in terms of the rationale for allowing the fulfillment of 12 months for over five years. It's still, you know, people are just not quite understand what the rationale we base on in order to, you know, help steel craft out. And I can't agree that there might be some complication, so I would like to pull that to discuss and understand more about.
Okay. Just to discuss more about it.
Councilmember Brightegum?
Where do we go? Yeah, please go, George.
So, you know, in my, in my looking at it over the, you know, I'm not necessarily opposed to helping our businesses, but, you know, one of the things, and correct me if I'm wrong, I don't see a letter, an email, or anything indicating there's an actual need. I see a contract, but who asked for this? Was steel, did Steel Craft come to us, or did we go to Steel Craft saying, hey, we can give you this? I don't see a need. There's no articulated need from Steel Craft in the form of an email requesting this, a letter, nothing. And I'm not accusing anybody of doing that. Don't get me wrong, but I don't understand why we don't see a letter requesting this or something in the staff report. It kind of smacks of corporate welfare, and from what I understand, there's no provisions in there to ensure that the money or the benefit is going to be extended to the tenants of the Steel Craft. We have no, we have no contractual agreement saying that, you know, this is going to benefit the tenants in any way. You know, we could possibly get a month or two from now, one of our tenants got out of there getting evicted, and then we're going to look like idiots after we just, you know, went through all of this. So, you know, I do have some reservations. With that being said, I am for helping our local business owners. We have just recently, six months ago, extended the lease on this particular property for another five, an extra five years so they could get better financing supposedly. And, you know, I really want to see this thrive and succeed and be a vital part of our community. But at the same time, we got to ask ourselves, are we going to keep throwing money at something if it fails? Are we going to keep, you know, are we going to keep shoveling city money, city efforts into something that's failing? Are we going to let, you know, at some point, we got to let the baby walk, let the baby, see if the baby can walk on its own? So my thoughts are, we're also setting a precedent by doing this with the hotels. You know, we've already had hotels hemming and hawing about the TOT, and basically, we're doing the same thing for this company, and they're just going to simply come to us and say, we want a reduction in TOT, and, you know, you did it for Steel Craft, why wouldn't you do it for us? You know, so I got a couple of reservations there. You know, so those are some of my thoughts.
Thank you, George. Any others care to comment at this point?
Now, this is a member of Klaffenstein. Sorry.
Yeah, please go ahead, Stephanie.
No, no, I just, I would like to hear, maybe there's a deeper level of understanding or discussion from staff, you know, maybe there's some intel or some information that would be helpful or more beneficial to us to better understand what's happening day to day with the Steel Craft brand and with these different vendors. So if there's any clarification that staff can provide, I think that would be beneficial at this time.
Yep, I was going to go there next and ask Lisa if she could give us kind of some background on how this originated, and, you know, did they ask for this rent deferral, and maybe the uniquenesses of this case in that this isn't just any small business, this is a, this is one that we own the land and we're their landlord. So we have a landlord-tenant relationship with this group, and that it's a people gathering place that has sort of been decimated by this whole thing. So I don't know, maybe some background from Lisa to put it in context.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, O'Neil here, just one or two before Lisa steps in. If I could say, maybe if we could articulate to, to the public, I know we all got a yellow letter which modified what was on the original. Could we articulate, maybe verbally, what the current agreement is? Maybe Lisa can do that before she gets into her explanation.
Sure. Before we go to Lisa, colleagues, any other sort of comments or questions to frame this so that Lisa can respond and sort of address whatever's on our minds? Any others before Lisa goes?
Yes, this is customer fact, Bowie. I just want to echo along similar concern that Councilmember Josh Bratton have mentioned. But I also would like to add one additional thing, that is, you know, cities just don't generally go into extending the lease or, I mean, not deferring the payment of the lease property, even though this is the only property that the city owns and is renting out to tenants, in this case, SteelCraft. And understanding that SteelCraft has put in a lot of investments to build a very nicely, you know, facility for specialty food. And they just opened about 1,500 years ago, and then was hit by the pandemic. However, I just feel a little, even though I partly want to help them out, because this is one of the cornerstone of the city project. But on the other hand, caught, been pulled by the notion that, you know, many, so many small businesses in our city are facing the same, the same issue, the same burden caused by the pandemic. Many nonprofit organizations as well, including, you know, organizations that have to rent space. They do not get help from, and we do not know where our city financial will be heading to. We could face, you know, just a couple million. That is just as hard as SteelCraft and many other businesses, that we may, the city may lose millions of dollars if the pandemic, you know, goes on further. So, I have struggle to see, you know, if we, if we would focus to help SteelCraft, I would like to see a much more, you know, meticulous analysis in terms of, you know, can we do it? What is the downside of we not helping SteelCraft, and what is the downside of how helping them? I don't feel that we have run through that exercise yet. That's the struggle, and I think with that, I hopefully Lisa can give us more, a little bit more information in it. I finish.
Thank you. Colleagues, any other, who haven't spoken, any other comments or questions, or any thoughts to frame Lisa's report? I'll just add for clarification that this request, just the technical side, it's for a rent deferral. They're not asking for a single penny to be waived, so it's a rent deferral request, not a rent abatement request, so just within that premise. So, obviously, there's a minor consequence of, you know, time value of money. We don't get the money now, we don't get it till 12 months out, starting or whatever, for the repayment. But they're actually not asking for rent abatement, and under the context of them being clearly financially facing a hardship directly related to COVID, and us being their landlord, and by our very own ordinance, we don't even have the option to consider evicting them. So, therefore, we must work with them, and this is their request. So, just within that context, I'll pass it over to Lisa, and she can comment. Lisa, are you there? Are you on mute? Lisa?
Can you hear me?
Now we can.
Okay.
Think you're on mute.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Jones and members of the City Council. Lisa Kim, Assistant City Manager and Community Economic Development Director, and I'll be providing the staff report for the request made by SteelCraft Garden Grove to request a rent deferral for a period of time. And so, I'll go through the staff report and then add some additional remarks related to the request for consideration at this point in time. And any additional questions the council may have, I'll be happy to respond as well. So, I want to first maybe highlight that this is, would be the third amendment to the SteelCraft lease. Obviously, as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, it's had a global impact on all the restaurant and the food industry. And many of our local restaurants and eateries have closed or have operated on a very limited capacity since the stay-at-home executive order was put in place in mid-March. And that was necessary, obviously, to slow the spread of the virus. I think as a result of really reduction or sales or no sales, many of the tenants are seeking assistance to afford a period of time. So, as we begin to reopen and transition to reopening, there needs, the request by SteelCraft is to also allow some transition period for them to really bring back the tenants back to some level of transition while following the governor's directive with the four stages of reopening for dining restaurants. This request came directly from SteelCraft in mid-March. They had requested a period of time for rent deferral. The period of time would begin April 1st, so it would be retro to April 1st through March 31st, and it would be for a period of one year. The request by SteelCraft is a rent deferral period, as the mayor highlighted. What would happen is at the end of the deferral period, the amount of outstanding rent that would be owed to the city would be re-amortized and repaid over a period of time. So, normally, their rent to the city is roughly about $8,120 per month. That would be increased with the outstanding balance of just under $1,700. So, in about a year's time, they would repay the past due or deferred amount to the city. I think something to note in this period of time, there are different circumstances with each business operation in the city of Garden Grove. Whether you're manufacturing, the food industry, hotel, I think each needs to be viewed at on a case-by-case basis. For SteelCraft, it was the, and was envisioned to be really transformative in our downtown core. In addition, I think the deferral is to ensure that jobs are returned to our downtown core as well. And it would be a different opportunity for us to focus on job retention effort by affording and granting a potential rental deferment to allow the jobs to return back to our downtown. I think, and also, the restaurant industry has been very, very impacted. I'm sure many of our frequent favorite places to dine, some may never reopen. We have seen on the news and the media, national chains that have well been established for 30-plus years will unlikely reopen as well. And those are stories that are told and viewed and read daily on the various media outlets that we look to for information. I think the priority under our economic development strategy overlaid with the COVID pandemic is job retention and job creation. Of the nine tenants that were original tenants to SteelCraft when it opened in the fall of last year, only seven may likely return. And I think the SteelCraft operator with a communal dining space and a gathering space and a community space, the opportunity to be partners in allowing a reopening and transition for this dynamic project will speak volumes to the community really supporting reinvestment locally. It is not one size fits all. We do have, there are absolutely different types of resources for our respective business communities. For SteelCraft, they've requested a rent deferral and will repay it back to the city. I think with supporting nine independent entrepreneurs, if the council would consider the deferral, staff would be available and happy to report out quarterly on the number of tenants that have returned, the number of jobs that have been retained, the number of support that SteelCraft management has provided to their respective tenants and small business here in Garden Grove. We'll be happy to provide that information to the council on a regular basis as well. At this time, I'm available for any additional questions the council may have. But at this point in time, I think, given its dynamic contribution to our downtown core, the job creation, the retention of Garden Grove businesses, giving them a lifeline to be able to transition and reopen, those are some of the bases for bringing forward the recommendation this evening. That concludes my report, and I'll be happy to answer any additional questions you may have.
Thank you, Lisa. Colleagues, any questions?
I have one question, customer fact, Bowie.
Please, go ahead.
Customer Bratton had mentioned about if we help SteelCraft out. Is there anything in the agreement that will, you know, protect and make sure that the tenant will also get the benefits? For example, if SteelCraft doesn't have to pay, well, they will have to pay, but they just defer the payment, the rent, the lease to the city, will the tenant also be exempt from having to, you know, have also be able to defer payment until such time, you know, at 12 months from today if the council would focus on this?
I believe that is the intent of the SteelCraft folks. To date, one of the nine tenants have paid rent. And the takeaway is to pass through the deferral to allow some smoothing time for the tenants when they do return to have a little bit of deferral to allow them to really come back to full operation. So, that is the intent of SteelCraft, and I'll be happy to report out that information at our quarterly update.
What do you mean by intent? Intent is not something that we agree upon. Is that something that we can make sure that they will, they will do that, not just intend to do it?
I think the takeaway is, they are still in negotiations with the tenants that will return to SteelCraft. And the ownership is being as proactive as possible to work with their tenants. At this point in time, I don't have the level of detail that you are requesting, Councilmember Bowie, but I'll be happy to provide follow-up information to the council.
Councilmember Brightigan?
Go ahead, George.
So, I guess what, my question is that of hardship. I can, somebody's got their microphone.
One second, can I ask, yeah, can I ask everybody to mute if you're not speaking?
So, my question is one of hardship, and I'm being told, and I can surmise reasonably, that there is a hardship. But I'm being told there was a letter mailed in March. I haven't seen that letter. Generally, when there's a letter addressed to the mayor or the council, we all get it emailed to us, or we would see that letter. So, I don't know, you know, that SteelCraft doesn't have insurance that covers this, as some restaurants actually do. And, you know, some businesses actually do have insurance that has been covered, you know, with the COVID. So, I don't see anything like that in the staff report. And so, again, I can reasonably surmise there's a hardship, but I don't know, because I'm not seeing their letter in the staff report. I'm not seeing their paper trail that led to the negotiation. I'm not seeing any of that. I'm just taking someone's word for it, and granted, I trust you, but at the same time, you know, trust but verify, right? That's kind of my motto, and I'm not seeing that. So, I just would have to say, you know, in the future, I'd like to see a little more detail in the staff reports. This being a consent item, I think this is a major item that affects the community, and it should be a little more transparent than be putting in a consent in the agenda. But, you know, that's my personal thing. You know, a little more clarity would've been nice on this. I do think I can reasonably surmise there's a hardship here, but again, I'm not seeing a letter or any request from the business themselves. I'm not seeing any of that, so I'll just leave that at that.
Customer member Bowie, Mayor Jones, and colleagues, I don't see any real urgent issue where we need to vote on this today. And the head give a lot of, a few question that we don't have an answer to. I think it is most beneficial to the public if we could table this for, before we go to meeting, even staff more time to work with SteelCraft to get us more information so that we can act on it, and that we identify this as an item, not as a consent item. So, that's, so that the public and council members have, you know, have the necessary information to provide input on it.
I'd second that, because that's a motion.
Was that a motion?
Yes, a motion, second.
Got it, okay. Any discussion? Other colleagues, anyone else who would care to speak?
Well, I don't, I just, I mean, if this isn't going to put, is this gonna put SteelCraft or any of the vendors? I just want to know, is any of this so time pertinent that this is gonna cause greater strife to any of the current vendors that are within the SteelCraft location? Lisa, is that, would this be a problem? I mean, I don't want to cause anybody any further financial hardship if we don't vote on this tonight. So, just clarifying to make sure that if we decide to get some more information and get a little more transparency on this issue, is that going to hurt or harm any situation with SteelCraft this time?
Well, right now, I don't see any, any.
Okay, I understand, but I asked Lisa, I asked Lisa Kim. Let me ask Lisa, please.
So, I think the request for the 12-month deferral could come back to the council. I believe the reopening of dining restaurants and heading into stage two over the next two, three, two, three weeks, I think it's important for SteelCraft to have some flexibility as they renegotiate with their original tenants to return to SteelCraft and reopening, and also provide some deferral. So, as they come back online, all that discussion is happening now. If I may ask for some additional information or direction from the council, so I can provide that to SteelCraft. My only caution is, the delay for another three weeks would risk losing additional tenants at the property. And that is detail of information that I don't have, but I believe it will result in additional original tenants not returning. So, that would be my only reaction to the request for continuance to the next council meeting. So, it's only two weeks, but I So, it's only two weeks, but I just don't know what that impact of two weeks to negotiations currently in the midst with Steelcraft and their tenants.
Councilman Fabui, I would like to comment on this input. You know, what you said makes sense, but it's not the only sensible things. There is no guarantee that by voting, yes, to give a term of payment deferred payment will want to, you know, merchant will stay the passion and continue with the operation. Some of them may decide to stay or may decide to move, not based on they don't have, they got a term of deferred rent, but they need to see what the livelihood of they would be able to be successful, you know, once the market is reopened. So, it's not just based on that one particular reason alone. In fact, I, one of the things that I would like to ask Steelcraft is, if we give them a term of deferred rent, what is their plan to, you know, to come back, and what is the reason for, you know, successful? We just, we, it's very difficult for us to make decisions out of the vacuum when we don't have enough information, and it was just based on, you know, emotion, yes, we want to keep Steelcraft and we want to keep the tenants. Of course, we want to do that, everyone wants to do that, but do we, out of that emotion alone, what is the rationale for us to move forward with the deferred payment? Now, on the other hand, we may have very little choice. If they don't have money to pay, they won't pay, and we don't want, we do not want to rush to evict them even after the market had been reopened and the, you know, order not to evict has expired. We still don't want to do that. So, our choice is limited. However, we, before we make the decision one way or the other, we need to have enough information, and we are lacking that. So, I think that is why we would like you to come back and work with Steelcraft in the next two weeks to get us that information. Now, the tenants know that the city council may, you know, we supporting it, we just need more information, and I don't think that would be something that they would decide to say or decide to leave just because we want to ask for more information.
Councilman Breckingham.
Please, go ahead, George.
You know, another thing that kind of makes the hairs on my, back of my head go up is the fact that there's nobody from Steelcraft, either in the audience, wrote a letter requesting, you know, that we do this, nothing, no oral communications from them at all, so that really makes me question the urgency. It really makes me question if there is a hardship. I'm not seeing anything from Steelcraft, not even their presence tonight, either personal or written. They're just not here. So, I'll leave that at that.
All right, colleagues.
Can I jump in, sorry?
Yeah, please, go ahead, yeah, please, thank you.
You know, at first, I was pretty apprehensive about this item, given that it was an 18-month long-term. After reading the report and speaking to staff, and now it being reduced to 12 months, and in comments that you spoke earlier, Mayor Jones, that we are going to get the money, this is just a deferment, and I'm not entirely sure, you know, what postponing this to the other meeting, to the next meeting will cause. I know Lisa said that there's some issue, maybe evictions of tenants that are currently there, which was one of my biggest concerns with this item, was that, you know, we, if we're going to give Steelcraft a break as a landlord, then I anticipate wanting to help keep the tenants that are currently there. I know some of them aren't, haven't been able to and are no longer with Steelcraft. So, the ones that are there, who have invested so much in opening these businesses, some of them are first-time business owners, I think we need to do what we can to help them. As their landlord, this is an opportunity that we have directly to assist, and again, it's, I think it was about $150,000 over the span of the 12 months that we would eventually get. So, I just feel that at this point, we should go with staff's recommendation, and I'll make the motion to move this item forward.
You're making a substitute motion?
Yes, to, for the original item.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
There's, there's, Councilman, there's.
Go ahead, Tuha.
No, I was about to say, I second to that, but it's okay. Councilwoman, Stephanie already said it.
Mr. Mayor, O'Neal here.
Yeah, John, please go ahead.
Yeah, just a question on the original motion that Councilmember Buie made. Was that a two-week, was it two weeks? Am I sure if I heard it correctly? Come back in two weeks?
That's correct, that's two weeks, that's the following council meeting, so it's two weeks.
Yeah, okay.
The reason, yeah, the reason is this, Kim, it's for the, for the very reason that if we want to do this, I want to make sure that the tenant who stays will be legally protected, not just by intent, but legally protected, and that I want to give them, I want to hear from them as well. If they, if they want to stay, what is it that we could do to help them become successful? In the opening, I talked to a few of them. They seem to be small business, you know, family-owned, family-owned business, and some of them, this is the first time they get into business. So, I really want to help them become successful. It's the tenant that I really deeply care about, and all of those information is not available. And intent, you know, just because Lisa Kim mentioned that, yeah, you know, the intent is Steelcraft will not require the tenant to pay their rent for the next 12 months, but we don't know that. What if in some of the negotiations, it broke down, and they don't want to give that? There is nothing for us to, you know, to help them commit it to it. Furthermore, I really want to, to make sure that Steelcraft and the tenant will be successful. And so far, I don't see any plans, just like Councilman Breckingham mentioned, they don't even communicate to us to see, it seemed to me like, oh, you know, good, let's ask them to do this, and I don't care, you know.
Yeah.
Councilmember Buie.
Stephanie, please go ahead.
Thank you. I understand what you're saying, and I agree. I think for something of this magnitude, it would've been nice to have been reached out to, it would've been nice to have a greater level of communication, but I'm also just concerned about people that have maybe put their life savings or everything they've got, all their hopes and dreams into one of these spaces in Steelcraft, and if delaying this, or if any such manner can, maybe gives them an opportunity or to lose that space or to lose that dream, I just want to make sure that we're not delaying something and hurting these tenants further. So, I think that's where I'm at right now. I agree with a lot of what you're saying, and I understand the need for greater transparency to make sure we have a better understanding of what exactly this means, but at the same rate, I'm concerned that we might lose further tenants, and I don't want to see that happen. I don't know that Steelcraft really has had the opportunity to show what it's got and to show what it can be in Garden Grove. It came in, and then we had a winter, and now we have a COVID, and, you know, I think that May would've been their moment to shine, summer, and so forth, and so I really don't want to lose out on some of the tenants that we have in there. And so, you know, Lisa and others, I'm deferring to you to tell me, you know, if passing this helps us keep those tenants in those spots, because if that's the case, then I have to support this.
Councilman Breckingham.
Wait, real quick, can I ask everybody to mute again, please? Mute, mute, mute. Thank you. Go ahead, George.
So, what I'm hearing from everyone, it seems like Kim and Stephanie, is that all of our concerns were with the tenants. I think we're all in agreement here. The contract as written has no protections for the tenants. It is strictly for the landlord, Steelcraft. There is nothing there that forces them or asks them or gives them intent, as Councilman Buie says. You know, the contract as written doesn't help the tenants at all. I just want to make that very, very clear. You know, we're all concerned about the tenants, but this contract does not do anything for the tenants as written, and that's one of my main hiccups with it. So, I think we all agree on this, and that's why I think putting it off two weeks really helps, gives them more time to focus this contract a little better and write it up in a way that we want it to be written up.
Mayor Steve Jones here. I'd like to address just that point, because I did a lot of thinking about that over the last couple of days. So, I think we all share the same concern about just this, you know, this project and how it started and how it came about, and all of the individual tenants who, you know, poured themselves into opening up their small businesses within this project. There's a technical aspect to this, which we should be cautious of, which is that we have a landlord-tenant relationship with Steelcraft or with Martin Howard CDM, rather. He's got his own landlord-tenant relationships with all of these tenants that exist in there. We've got to be a little cautious from a legal standpoint that we don't overstep that bounds into inserting ourselves in the middle of landlord-tenant disputes that are outside of our domain. So, that's something that I thought about, because I started out in the same place where you guys are at. It's like, how does this pass through, and how do we, you know, ensure that the whole band's going to stay together, and, you know, that kind of stuff, right, and the tenants too? But it's a little bit of a slippery slope, and just for example, you know, if, for example, if he extended the same offer through to the tenants, I'm not sure that that's going to work for them, you know? I'm not sure that they can repay their full rent deferred. They may be asking him for rent abatement for a period of time. They may be, we don't know, so it gets a little more complicated, you know, deferral versus abatement. I think primarily, we have to look at this from our own perspective as a city slash, as the landlord of this property and this project, in that we've got our ground lease tenant offering to make good on their full rent. They're not asking for us for rent abatement, and I can, I can share with you, as a private landlord in real life, outside of my city role, there's a lot of commercial tenants asking for rent abatement now, and asking for a lot more than just deferring it down the line for 12 months. So, by comparison, this doesn't give me heartache that he's asking for a deferral, and I think it gives them the flexibility to move forward and kind of craft their own plan, and I sort of trust that they'll be conscientious at trying to keep the integrity of the placemaking aspect and the vibe of the tenancy together as much as possible, but I also caution that we need to be a little worried about inserting ourselves in the middle of potential landlord-tenant disputes that may arise out of whatever we try and attach into this agreement. So, just a little word of caution, that I feel you guys, in terms of, you know, I'm worried about the tenants too, and I got to know some of them personally, and I want the experience to stay the same and not get diluted. I want to maintain the integrity of the placemaking aspect of the project, but we've got to be a little bit cautious about what we insert into a legal document that is expected to be passed from our tenant to his tenants, unless we want, you know, unless we want to open ourselves up for, one, legal liability, and, two, possibility of retrade if that doesn't work as it passes through. So, anyways, long story short, I've come, I've thought about this a lot, and I'm okay with moving forward with it tonight. I don't think I'm going to change that in two weeks. I'd like to stay in close contact with them and sort of hear as their plan unfolds. I know even just earlier today, the governor is starting to opine about how restaurants and dine-in facilities may be able to reopen faster than we thought with certain restrictions. So, I think giving Martin Howard, giving Steelcraft the platform to be able to craft a plan, knowing that they've got some cover to move forward with from their own perspective is, I'd sort of rather fast-track that than delay it unnecessarily, but, you know, but I'll leave it up to you guys. I mean, I don't think a two-week extension necessarily kills it, but my preference would be to just move forward and get it done.
This is Councilmember Kim Nguyen. I just wanted to state that I am standing by my substitute motion. I thought we were, you know, Mayor, I want to thank you for eloquently level-setting us there, because I thought we were all operating from that notion that we are the landlord and the tenant being Howard, and so not being able to kind of dictate what he does further down the line with his tenants, but providing this relief to him would, in a sense, provide quicker relief to his tenant. So, that's why I made that substitute motion, and I stand by it, and I hope that Stephanie stands by her second of that.
Well, Tuha?
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Hold on, Fat. Fat, hold on one second. Tuha was asking to speak first. Tuha?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mayor Steve Jones. I totally thank you for, very much for your logic and eloquently put it together. I, you know, in this difficult time, I think we have, we supporting the local business, and we want to make sure, you know, we cannot just work on the traditional way, but then we can tell what's going to happen the week after. But moving forward, I also suggest that we should be more prepared, more transparent so that we'll be able to respond to constituents if any question come up. So, I support to move forward for this time, but in the future, I would recommend that we should have more communication and strong parents to prepare us to make decisions in the accordingly. That's all I say.
Agreed. Fat?
Yes. First of all, the idea that, or the notion that we interfere with the landlord-tenant agreement or negotiations, we are not. The city council, all we want to say is, okay, we are going to give the master tenant, which is Steelcraft, a 12-months deferred payment, and we would like that also, you know, the sublease, which is the smaller tenant, be also allowed that benefit. That's only, the only thing that we are asking. Everything else, we stay away from their landlord-tenant relationship. We don't interfere with it. We just want to make sure that, okay, Steelcraft, you ask it, and we want to help you, but you have, you ask for deferred payments. So, the tenant that pay rent to you should also be enjoy the deferred payment of term that we give you. That's all, the only thing that we ask. We're not interfering with their negotiation in terms of, they should keep this tenant, they should keep that tenant, and we're not interfering with the tenant in terms of whether they should stay or they should leave. We don't, we don't get involved in that, right? So, what we're asking is really simple, and I don't believe two weeks will cause any problem. My colleagues have mentioned that they are worried that if delayed two weeks may cause some tenant to move out. I could ask a question different way, differently, you know, what if the tenant still wants to move out because not having, being able to pay rent is, rent is only a small part of the cost? So, you know, if we, if we, if we ask questions just because we are worried about something, it doesn't make really business sense. We have to look at it from a, from a real business perspective, and that we don't have. We do not, we have not been able to get any input from the tenant themselves. None of the tenant come to us and ask us to help, and I don't know what Steelcraft plan either. So, how do we, how do we vote on something that we have no idea? The tenant may not ask us to help, or they may ask us to help. We have no idea. So, how could So how could we vote in a vacuum? So that's why I'm asking it to be deferred two weeks. It doesn't kill anything, I believe. And for Councilmember Tuha, you mentioned that in the future, there should be more communication. But for now, it's okay to move ahead. What kind of statement is that? You know, it's wrong, but it's okay to move forward with it.
Mr. Mayor, John O'Neill.
John O'Neill, please go ahead.
Oh, I just wanted to clarify what I was thinking. You know, normally, two weeks wouldn't be a problem to ask to wait two weeks. And I would hope that Steelcraft would tell their tenants, you know, hey, I'm working with the city. We just found out about this ourselves, the council members, you know, back on Thursday or Friday. So normally, two weeks wouldn't be a problem. Although I know I do have a sense of urgency. But I would hope that Steelcraft would reach out to their tenants and, you know, bolster them up as, hey, I'm working with the city. But with all that said, I mean, I want to support Steelcraft. I know we all do, and we want more information. I think all this could have been solved if they were somehow on the call tonight or at the podium. We could have asked a few questions, and we'd probably be done. But with all that said, I think I'm still leaning towards doing it tonight just because I know that my mind probably won't change in two weeks. And I don't want to jinx, you know, losing a tenant. Or I don't think my mind's going to change in two weeks. But I would have preferred to have them here tonight to speak. That's my position. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, this is Tuha, Mayor.
Yeah, Tuha, please go ahead.
Okay.
Yes, please go.
Thank you. Councilmember Fatburi, I just want to make a statement on this one, okay? There's an urgency. And I completely understand your point of view as well, and I support that. But there's an urgency. We are at a pandemic crisis, and we don't know what really economic situation is going to be down the run. I would have been talking to a lot of small businesses. We, they don't even know what's going to happen tomorrow. They depend on every dime. So we are here to support them. And it's not I'm going to change my mind in two weeks. But there really urgency on this one. And that's why I try to make the right decision for it. Thank you.
Mayor Jones?
Thank you.
Mayor Jones?
Yeah, okay, go ahead.
Okay, Tuha, of course. And I appreciate that you understood my point. The reason I'm raising that up is people are talking about a sense of urgency. Of course, this is an urgent, we all are in a major issue. But I don't see related to still points whether two weeks would make any difference for the following reason. No one had to pay rent. Steelcraft doesn't have to pay. The tenant doesn't have to pay Steelcraft rent. And nothing will happen. No one will get evicted for the next, you know, few weeks. That's a reality. So I do not, I do not understand the urgency from the point that if we do not give them the deferred lease payment, then things will be out, will collapse and will be out判. Because nothing will happen. No one will have to pay, even Steelcraft. If they don't pay us rent for the next couple of months, nothing will happen. They're not going to be, we are not going to drag them to court or threaten them with anything. Everything will continue normal. And so that's why I do not understand this as an urgent issue. There is other urgent issue related to small business, yes, of course. And that is, there is no customer. That's the main problem. Not about the urgency of having to pay or not having to pay rent because it has no consequence one way or the other for the near term. I just want to protect the tenant in the right now that rents it now, that they surely will be protected, and they will not have to pay rent for the next 12 months if we give Steelcraft the same things. That's what I'm trying to make sure, that in the contract, in the agreement, the tenants, the small business that we're talking about, not the big Steelcraft, is being protected. And then Mayor Jones.
Thank you, sir. Again, I would just reiterate what I said before is I think that's a really slippery slope to insert ourselves in the middle of that or to extend that. I mean, that, you know, to me, there's a lot of things that could go wrong.
Can Omar chime in on that? You keep mentioning about slippery road in terms of legal.
Sure.
Mayor, Mr. City Council. Our contract agreements, at least the agreement between Steelcraft and the city, we do not have a relationship with Steelcraft's tenants. And I would not recommend the city to enter into such relationship. You know, that's a private relationship between those two parties. You know, beyond the land, and ultimately, if first comes to shove, we have eviction control over our land, we do not have any authority over Steelcraft's tenants. And so at this point, you know, we don't even have a copy of the tenant agreements between Steelcraft and their tenants. And so I can't even give you any legal advice as to how that relationship is set up.
If we, Omar, so help me understand this, right? So if we agree to give Steelcraft a 12-month deferred lease payment, can we also, in that agreement with, that we give them the 12-month deferred payment, that they, that we, that they also pass it along to their tenant? That's all we ask, nothing else. It's very simple. The city of Paltrow.
I don't, I don't have enough information. I don't have enough information to know whether that's a workable solution because we don't know if half the tenants or one or two tenants have already left, have already reached their contracts, have already given notice that, you know, terminated their tenancy.
I'm not worried about that, Omar. Whoever wants to left, whoever already left, we're not doing that. Or whoever wanting to leave, whoever wanting to leave, whether or not we give the 12-month deferred lease or not. People may feel want to leave. I'm not, that's not something for me to worry about. What I'm worried about is if I'm, if the city is giving 12-month deferred lease payments to Steelcraft, I would like to ask Steelcraft they also extend that to those tenants who want to stay.
Mayor and Council, if I could just share some information.
Thank you, Lisa.
Councilmember Fatburi, your point is made clear about being able to pass on to the tenants. I have received a note from Steelcraft, number one. They apologize they are not here in the audience, and they will certainly be available to provide additional information that the council has requested. They do want the council to be assured that the deferral being requested today is anticipated to be passed on to their respective tenants all the way through 2021. And that is the intent, and that has always been their plan. And I just wanted to make sure that the council had that little bit of additional information, and if that's helpful for you tonight. So thank you.
So you just texted him, and he just confirmed that?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Again, I have, I have concerns about crossing certain legal lines. And I think we're going to, I think we're going to open ourselves up for kind of a retrade, right? I think, and I was trying to be sort of cautious in my wording, but I think we should be thankful that our tenant is asking for a rent deferral. I think we should sign that up while we have a chance. Because it could have been worse.
Well.
It could be, it could be being a good partner by only asking for a deferral.
Councilmember Kim Nguyen, I already made a motion. Stephanie, second it, can we please call for a vote?
Yes, let's call for a vote. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Brightigam?
We're voting, which one are we voting on? The secondary one first, or the?
The substitute.
The substitute to approve the deferral as per staff recommendation.
No.
Councilmember Deidre Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
No.
Councilmember Koffenstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Protem O'Neill?
Yes.
Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion received, five yes votes, with councilmembers Brightigam and Bowie voting no. This motion has passed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, colleagues, for a robust debate on that one. This takes us on to item three, items for consideration, 3A.
I do, I do need to interrupt just briefly, just to let you know that I did search my emails once again, and I did find one additional person who had emailed regarding the evictions by V8 Investments. And that was from Calvin Nguyen of Beat Care. And I will forward that email to you later tonight.
Madam Clerk, this is Tuha. Can you tally how many totals that we received, the email in regard to evictions?
It looks like, hold on one second.
She looking?
I just want to make sure we have all the records, that's all.
I received 19 emails from 19 separate people.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Okay. Thank you. So, okay, so item 3A.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, a point of order real quick.
Sure.
So basically, as most of you are aware, I was up to my eyebrows and stuff on this weekend. We got the agenda on Friday evening. And quite frankly, I didn't have time to get through this entire 40-page document. I got partway through it. I got through the rest of the agenda, but I put this to the side because I really wanted to concentrate on it. My anniversary was yesterday, plus I was at work, so I didn't have time to really get into it then. And then after I got off work tonight, I drove in. I'm going to request possibly, if I can get a two-week extension so I can review this thoroughly and actually get a chance to digest it. I know, I apologize for that. You know, I don't want this to prejudice it in any way. I'm not, you know, for or against it in any kind of manner. I just need more time. I'd like to motion if we can move this for two weeks.
Can we maybe hear, I guess I'd like to hear from others. I know there's others who have been working hard and championing this thing. So I think we need to kind of take a balanced approach to listen.
Mayor Jones, this is Councilmember Kim Nguyen. I don't think that that's appropriate. We all were given the same amount of time to review this. We all have other things going on. I think, you know, hear the information, ask for questions, and put your vote, and let that be the case for tonight.
Sure, and that's appropriate and understood, Kim. I, my only thing is honestly, I had a lot of things up to my eyebrows. And, you know, there's no way I could vote for something. So you're forcing me to vote no, and I don't really want to vote no. That's what I'm kind of trying to say. And so, anyway, with that being said, I'm just requesting a two-week extension.
Staff will give a report, you can ask questions. I think that this conversation and discussion can allow for you to make a decision one way or the other. And if you vote no because you didn't have time to read it, then that's how you vote.
Roger that, Kim. It's a 40-page document written in legalese. And in the first three pages, I've got about 250 questions. And I'm sure that those questions would be answered if I read the entire document. But with that being said, I'll go by whatever you guys want to do.
And you can abstain from the vote, you don't have to vote no.
Mr. Mayor, O'Neill here.
Please go ahead, John.
I think we should at least hear the presentation from staff, and then we should get a, we have the, I believe we have the building trades in the lot, in the podium. I mean, we should hear what staff, we directed them to go negotiate. We need to hear back what's there.
I would agree with that.
I'd like to hear the presentation and the rebuttal or whatever into discussion. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, this is Tuha.
Please go ahead.
Yeah, I agree with Councilmember John O'Neill. I think we should have a presentation from staff. And then, you know, we can approach the questions with the, from the labor.
Thank you. Okay, do we have a staff report? Let's go ahead with that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council. Lisa Kim again, providing the staff report for the community workforce agreement. For your consideration this evening is approval of a community workforce agreement, which is often referred to as a project labor agreement in which the purpose is to promote use of local workforce to complete construction projects and develop a pipeline of construction careers within the local community. By way of background, earlier, CWA research was conducted and presented to the city council last November. And the results of that information included evaluation of CWAs in Orange County, exploration of possible options for a CWA in Garden Grove. And we had initiated discussions with the LA Orange County Building and Construction Trades Council. Based on those discussions in November, city council directed staff to initiate negotiations with the LA Orange County Trades Council for a CWA. The proposed CWA presented this evening has taken into consideration a view of other agency CWA framework specific to public works projects only. And the negotiated terms of the CWA provides for the following. The term of the CWA is for five years with a report out at year three in terms of metrics for local hire. In terms of project application, at the November council meeting when the research information was presented, there was discussion relating to project thresholds in which the dollar amount of a public works project would ultimately trigger the application of CWA. What has since been negotiated with the trades council references back to the city Public Works Department Capital Improvement Plan for 2021 through 2025. It identifies the future capital projects in the pipeline. And historically, the Public Works Department has bundled several of these capital projects, and most of the projects that have been awarded in the last four years have been in excess of $1 million. The hiring targets for local, um, hires is thirty percent, of which, uh, is broken out, um, in these, um, areas. The priority, the first tier would be City of Garden Grove residents. Um, the second tier are the gateway cities which surround the City of Garden Grove boundaries, and, um, the third tier are the Orange County cities. There's also a target for, um, veterans, um, and, um, graduates of high schools in, um, Garden Grove and disadvantaged individuals. Some of the exclusions in the CWA includes work, um, performed by city employees and work associated with funding and grant restrictions. The im- the implementation of the CWA will likely require some monitoring responsibilities, and these costs will be built into each of the related, um, capital project. At this time, I would like to, um, ask Mr. Ernesto Madrano, representing the LA Orange County Trades Council, to highlight their work with local hire initiatives in Orange County and share some of their priorities for Garden Grove residents, veterans, disadvantaged individuals, as well as establishing an apprenticeship, um, outreach program, um, for local Garden Grove high schools and, um, area community colleges. So if Mr. Madrano could also, um, share, um, some insight that would be, um, that would happen now.
Thank you, Ms. Kim. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. First and foremost, let me thank, uh, your team, Lisa Kim, Bill Murray, Alana Chen, and your city companion, Marson Doval, for, uh, we had extensive and robust dialogue, discussion, and negotiations, and you have a top-notch team here that protects and really knows how to advocate for your city. With that said, um, this agreement, I think I want to preface with the fact that it provides a path for the middle-class careers through our joint labor management apprenticeship training centers, and which, by the way, we self-fund them. It comes at no cost of the taxpayer, and we pay for those apprenticeship, uh, training facilities. We provide opportunities to students with their apprenticeship readiness curriculums. We have graduated students from the Rancho Santiago Community College District Program, and we have placed them into our apprenticeship training programs, enabling them to learn as they earn with any one of the trades. This agreement, as you heard, will provide local, true local hire through our union hiring halls for the Garden Grove residents, Garden Grove High School graduates, and true veteran purpose hiring regardless of where they reside, and also for disadvantaged workers. We have our Helmister Hard Hats program that recruits veterans and facilitates prop entry into our apprenticeship programs. And the cost of public works projects are the same without or with an agreement, that you are already paying the prevailing wage, but you did, at this time, you don't get the benefit for your constituents. We build it efficiently in a safest manner. We do it right the first time with the minimum or not, no liabilities, and we don't have seniority. We work ourselves out of the job to maintain competitiveness for our contractors. In California, we invest two-hundred-million dollars in our joint apprenticeship training centers, and we graduate ninety-three percent of our journey-level workers of the state-certified apprenticeship programs in construction. We provide the highest skilled and trained workforce in the industry. And given that unemployment at this time, given the crisis of about almost twenty percent of the state, we think that this local, local hire provision in the agreement is a way to reinvest in your local workforce to reinvigorate your local economy. And I think this great city has demonstrated its ability and yearning to want to, uh, recruit and to, um, welcome economic development, and at this time, I think it's also good to do it for your workforce. With that said, I'm prepared to take any questions if, uh, they're, uh, they're ordered.
Thank you, Ernesto. Um, colleagues, any questions of staff or of Ernesto? Either one?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, John O'Neil, uh, I don't have any questions, but I could start off with some comments.
Please go ahead.
Okay, uh, first of all, I just want to thank, uh, city staff and the building trades for working these last couple, few months. I can't remember the exact date that we had a seven-o vote to go into negotiations with the building trades. Everybody knows the building trades. They've been around for a hundred years. So they worked very hard to bring back a very tailor-made, uh, agreement for the City of Garden Grove. It's unique, like beyond any other, uh, community workforce agreement I've seen in any other Anaheim or school district or what have you. So they worked hard to do that. There's a particular scope of work. It only pertains to that scope of work. Uh, it has a five-year agreement, which is the same time period it takes an apprentice to get from his apprentice, first-year apprenticeship to graduate, okay, to be a skilled journeyman and wireman. Uh, I would like to point out that tonight, there was, uh, at least thirty written, uh, letters of support from congressional people, state assembly and senate. Not one person that I know of, uh, in opposition to it. This will create local hire, veteran hire, Garden Grove High School hire, apprenticeships. There's no downside. Let's let the contractors that normally bid our city adapt. They might even be able to use the, the skilled workforce to create a better job situation. The city continues to have absolute right, the city and the general contractor that's awarded the project, has absolute right to award the contracts to who it wishes. Okay, there's no, nothing there. Uh, the local hire aspect, like I mentioned, as Mr. Ernesto Madrano just mentioned, uh, veteran hire, Helmister Hard Hats, Garden Grove High School graduate, disadvantaged, uh, individuals that may have had a, a, a point in their life where they were disadvantaged, or they're in disadvantage right now, but they have a skilled, uh, labor background. Tier one is Garden Grove residents. I happened to poll, I polled the, I asked Ernesto to contact his, uh, his affiliates. There's about fourteen affiliates. I contacted them, got a, a straw poll. There is, if there is not, there's somewhere between eight-hundred and a thousand tri- skilled trade members that live in Garden Grove that want to work in their own city. Um, and you heard some of them tonight. If you look through the letters we've received, a lot of those have good stories. There are apprentices that are currently in a program. There was one there tonight that spoke. Uh, his father was there. There was another guy there. All the different trades had chimed in. Tier two, so if you're not a Garden Grove resident, but you live in any connecting city, which is about eight cities, you know, Stanton, West Minister, Seal Beach, Los Alamos, Anaheim, Orange, Santa Ana, and Fountain Valley, if you touch Garden Grove, guess what? You're in tier two, and those workers will be dispatched if you can't find someone in Garden Grove. And that, and then after that, they go to Orange County. And if we can't fill out of Orange County, it goes outside of that. There's no downside. Uh, let the contractors sharpen their pencils and get the job, and then figure out to hire our people. All workers are guaranteed a prevailing wage that is required by law. They provided health care and a pension contribution. There is no work stoppages. There's no strikes. Uh, any disagreement will be handled by the trades and the contractor. The state, the city won't have to get involved unless there's some remediation that they could probably do to help something, but we don't even have those problems. There's a safety and drug program that is, uh, unparalleled. If you're, if you are impaired, you are not allowed on the job. You are, you have to go through a drug program just to get on the job before you, you start working. There is no downside. I, the, there is so many tradespeople in Garden Grove that can benefit, especially at this time with COVID-19, that could be working in their own city, working on roads, working on in water infrastructure, plumbers, electricians, painters, plasters, ironworkers, laborers, carpenters. You heard all the, you saw all the emails. I know you guys read them, because I read them all. Um, there's just so no downside. I don't understand how there can be a downside to this when we can provide this. So I am in full support of this. I'm a product of this. Thirty-five years ago, I got into an apprenticeship, uh, the electrical apprenticeship in Orange County. Thirty-five years ago, I graduated Rancho Alamos High School, was a good student, top of my class, but I knew I liked to work with my hands. I went to Fullerton College, kind of flailed around for a year, and I fell into the trades. Best kept secret. Got accepted into apprenticeship, never looked back. I bought two homes in Garden Grove. I sold one, bought the one I'm living in now. My family's been here since nineteen fifty-five. This is the only avenue for a local Garden Grove person to work in a skilled trade, to actually buy a house in Garden Grove, or even rent a nice apartment and, and, and have a good living. There, I, I just can't speak highly enough about it. I just wanted to get that off my chest. I'm a huge, huge proponent of this, and I will be voting for this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Um, can I hear from others?
Hi, Mayor Jones, this is Councilmember Kim Nguyen. Can I speak next?
Please go ahead.
I, I want to first thank our city staff for all of their hard work on this particular agreement, um, and to the building trades and other folks involved. Um, I know we, we sought insight from other cities as well, so thanks to them for giving their time and their expertise on this and helping guide us through this. Uh, change isn't easy, and there may be growing pains, but I am in full support of this community workforce agreement. I have always believed in the motto that Mayor Jones and city staff constantly use, which is live, work, and play in Garden Grove. Uh, this is not only, this is not only given opportunity to Garden Grove residents, graduates of Garden Grove high schools, but also to veterans and disadvantaged individuals that could include homeless and formerly homeless individuals. Uh, we have heard comments from folks spread throughout Garden Grove from west end to the east end. I'm excited for this opportunity to be able to work locally, spend locally, be, be more at home with our families. Uh, we are getting the most skilled and trained workers. We're getting access to state-certified apprenticeship programs. I have a, a high expectation of the building trades to work with us and the Garden Grove Unified Schools to share this avenue for folks, as John, uh, Councilmember O'Neil has mentioned, that could benefit from this path instead of going on a college track. Um, this provides a different set of opportunities, you know, um, this could potentially get rid of some of the debt that some of our students are going into because we're, you know, forced to think that college is the only way. Vocational and trade opportunities, I think, are one that are very underrated, and this gives an opportunity for those, for folks to see that. Um, I was very excited to see that we had some, uh, specifically some Vietnamese agent, uh, some Vietnamese-Americans writing that they're a part of the trades, and they're excited for this program as well. I've, I've seen that there's not, um, a high appetite for this in the Asian-American communities, I think, due to a lack of knowledge on joining a trade and the benefits of it. So I hope that this will foster that in that community. And again, I'm a strong su- supporter of this item.
Thank you.
Uh, Mayor Jones, if I could, yeah, Mayor Jones, if I could, Stephanie Klaufenstein. Um, first, I want to thank John for his heartfelt comments, um, very well said, and obviously this touches very close, uh, to your heart and obviously to your life. Um, I'm, I'm obviously in support of local hire and, um, excited to see what that does for families. It gives them the chance to, as, as Kim mentioned, to live, work, and play here in Garden Grove. Uh, and I think that's extremely important. Quality of life is everything. Um, and I'm also very anxious to see what this does for, uh, kids coming out of high school, both young men and women, giving them the chance to work with their hands and work in a trade, to realize that that is commendable and still viable and needed. And so, um, I think that does that for Garden Grove. To hear that eight-hundred to a thousand skilled trade workers are here in Garden Grove, my husband being one of them, um, I think that's, uh, that's really important and, and, and great to hear, so, um, I'm, I'm in support.
Mr. Mayor, this is Tuhah.
Yeah, go ahead, Tuhah.
Um, first of all, I just want to say thank you to the staff, um, for working really hard on this one thing last year. Um, and especially one thing I, I just want to point out is I, I'm fully in support of this. Uh, there's three things, uh, especially about, uh, apprenticeship, um, apprenticeship program. Um, it, it gets our young people or professions, um, to prepare them, um, choices right after high school, um, that they can, they can choose. There's, you know, many choices. And I think there's, the program would definitely, uh, one of the, um, one of the, uh, um, very highlight ones, uh, because I've been talking to a lot of high school kids. Um, they're not aware of this. Um, so this is, this, this definitely, uh, definitely a highlight on that. At the same time, local hiring, I, I'm the, I totally understand it's this opportunity to work locally, live in the city and work locally. Because in my profession, I travel far, a hundred mile a day. Um, so, you know, any, any opportunity to work locally, that definitely applies. Um, and it's, you know, when you work in the city, and, and it's going to come in circle. Uh, one, the third thing I, I really appreciate about this is about, uh, veteran hiring. Uh, that is definitely something, a good opportunity for all our veterans. Um, and, uh, they, they can work local, or, you know, they, they can find, um, o- opportunity there. So I fully support for this one. Thank you.
Councilmember Brightigum?
Thank you, Tuhah. Uh, yeah, go ahead, George.
Yeah, um, again, I'm, I'm, you know, very supportive of the trades. Um, I think that was indicative of, um, with some of the past meetings. Again, Ernesto was very, very gracious. Um, he called me on Friday. Unfortunately, we hadn't gotten our agendas yet at that point, so, um, there was really not, not a whole lot we could dig into. I, uh, so thank you for that and, and your time on that. Uh, thank you staff for preparing the staff report, and John, thank you for pushing all this stuff. Um, unfortunately, I was dealing with a very unique set of, uh, circumstances, um, last weekend. And, uh, with that being said, I wasn't able to, to dive into it like I'd like to. You know, I, I don't necessarily see any, um, rationale for not moving forward. I mean, there's obviously no exigency here, um, to move forward with this immediately. Um, but, you know, I understand where you guys are coming from, and, and if you, if you just want me to abstain, um, I will. I mean, that's fine. I, I mean, and then you guys can just vote however you want.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Uh, Councilmember Faboy here, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Um, I am, have been, uh, visiting the, uh, you know, Ireland Academy, uh, last year. And, uh, it impressed me a great deal, um, with their program for bringing in, uh, students from, uh, high school as well as from, you know, the veterans. I, I met a, uh, when I was there, I ran into a, uh, a veteran just got out of the military. And, uh, it touched me a great deal that, uh, this program has helped many veterans uh, coming out of the services, being able to find a good job, and helping them get away from the, uh, uh, you know, PPDs and, uh, and, and the bad experience. Since that, uh, trip, I have, uh, worked closely with, uh, some of the, uh, building trades, uh, folks to suggest that, uh, perhaps, uh, we need to find something that would come out as a win-win. Uh, no contract, no project, uh, has a hundred percent positive side and no negative. Everything has pro and con. But I'm glad that, uh, staff and the, uh, residents from the unit have come to some middle ground and come up with a win-win proposal for the, uh, resident of, uh, Garden Grove, for the veterans, for the high school kids. And for the local hire, whether they live in, uh, local workforce, whether they live in Garden Grove or in nearby city. But I understand the local hiring program to start out with people, with the workers in Garden Grove first. If they cannot do that, then they would look for workers from, you know, close by city, and then it will expand out. So I, I, I think this is a win-win for the city, for the union workers, for the, uh, you know, veterans, and for the high school kids. I, um, believe that, uh, with, uh, with the oversight, with the reporting, uh, from the city, we will be able to see a lot of fruit, uh, from this, uh, on this, uh, day on. And I will happily support it. Thank you, uh, the tutor for city staff and for the, uh, people of the, uh, building trades.
This, Mr. Mayor, I know you probably want to make comments, but I'd like to make a motion to approve 3A.
Councilmember Kim Nguyen, I'd like to second.
Mr. Mayor, are you there?
Oops, sorry, I was on mute that whole time. My, my bad.
Mr. Mayor, I, I know you'd like to make some comments, but I made a motion to approve, and Kim Nguyen seconded.
Sorry, yeah, Mayor Protem on the motion and Councilmember Kim Nguyen on the second. So I did say that, you just didn't hear me. Um, yeah, and I just like, I just like to comment that, um, you know, this went through a very lengthy and very thoughtful process, I know. Can I ask everybody to mute in the helicopter room there? So, what was I saying? Um, went through a, a very lengthy. Went through a very lengthy, methodical process. I know a lot of our staff members spent a lot of time working through the details of this. I know that the trades were very good to work with, and I think the upside of this is if we embrace it correctly and if, assuming the trades follow through and do kind of what they said they're going to do on these conversations we've had, then this forms a, forges a partnership. I think the trades can help us go identify sources of capital in Sacramento through grants, through funding opportunities to do more parks and rec projects, to do more capital improvement projects. I mean, I think they can go to bat for us to help bring money to the city that we can in turn funnel back through these projects. I think that's the win-win here if we move forward and it becomes a true partnership like that. So it's bigger than just creating jobs in Garden, or keeping jobs in Garden Grove and keeping expenditures in Garden Grove, that's all good. But I think there's a secondary effect that could be achieved if we play it right. So I would urge as we go forward that we keep in close contact with the trades and find ways to work together to create more work here in Garden Grove in general. So with that, we have a motion and a second. Unless there's any other comments, I'd like to call the vote, roll call vote.
Councilmember Brightigan?
Abstain.
Councilmember Deidre Wynn?
Oh, sorry, I was on mute. Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Klumpstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Kim Wynn?
Yes.
Mayor Protam O'Neil?
A passionate yes.
Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion received, six yes votes, with Councilmember Brightigan abstaining.
Thank you, colleagues. Let's move on to item 3B.
Item 3B is city council review and confirmation of the necessity for continuing the local emergency related to COVID pandemic and confirmation of the Director of Emergency Services executive orders related thereto. And I believe Mr. Sandoval is here to give the report.
Yes, Mayor, members of the city council, before you is a report, an opportunity for the city council to review and confirm the necessity for continuing the local emergency declared in response to the pandemic, COVID-19. Initially, the city council declared a local emergency after all three major government agencies adopted their own emergency. The county had adopted a local county emergency, the state adopted statewide emergency, and the United States, the president adopted a national emergency due to the pandemic. When, after the local emergency was declared, the city council was presented with a resolution to confirm it and to ratify it, which the city council did, ratify that local emergency. Under state law, the city council is required to review the local emergency every 60 days, and today is the opportunity for the city council to do just that. The staff recommendation is that the city council confirm the necessity for continuing the local emergency and also to confirm the Director of Emergency Services executive orders relating to that local emergency. There have been two orders. When the first declaration and proclamation was adopted, there were some orders that were adopted that would have expired on March 31st. The first executive order extended those orders through April 17th, and then the second executive order extended it to run concurrently with the governor's statewide emergency. So rather than putting specific dates to terminate, the latest executive order, which is attached to the report, allows a local emergency to run concurrently with the governor's declaration of a statewide emergency. So what your action, being requested by staff and confirming and allowing the local emergency to continue and confirming the executive orders is to continue with the following orders: activation of the Emergency Operations Center, the Public Health Experts' recommendations, this would be the county health officer's recommendations, are mandatory within Garden Grove. We have closed city facilities and council programs and classes. Suspension of street sweeping citations, suspension of water shut-offs for non-payment, and the city is accepting late payments without penalty. And lastly, suspension of the limitations of the municipal code pertaining to the hours of operation and deliveries to businesses and establishments engaged in essential activities. That is my staff report, and I'd be happy to ask any questions that you may have. Back to the mayor.
Thank you, Omar. Colleagues, any questions? Over.
Councilmember Brightigan?
Please, go ahead.
So, you know, and I think I mentioned this before. I understand the need for this, I truly do. I understand the necessity, but they're asking for council to vote for, to extend a local emergency, not a county emergency, not a state emergency, not a national emergency, but a local emergency. Yet we haven't gotten any numbers directly related to the local condition to make that judgment on. We get the county numbers for deaths related to COVID. We don't get Garden Grove-specific numbers. So I don't see how a city councilman in good conscience could vote one way or the other without having any facts. We can vote on emotion, we can vote on belief, we can vote on our personal opinion, but we can't vote on any facts because we don't get those numbers. So in June 19th, 2019, Assembly Bill 262, from my cursory reading, says that the county health officer is required to give us those facts, but we haven't been getting them. How many ICU beds from Garden Grove residents are being held? How many, you know, we don't get that information. We get the county-wide information, and quite frankly, we're not being asked to vote on a county emergency here, we're being asked to vote on a local emergency. So while I understand the necessity of doing this, I don't like basically being spoon-fed, you gotta do this without any facts. That really lies hard in my heart. And that's all.
Thank you, George. Any other comments?
Just to, I guess, briefly ask, is that something, I mean, I don't necessarily want to not vote on this because I don't want to potentially hinder our opportunity at grant or any other monies that could potentially come our direction, but could Omar or Scott speak upon that a little bit? Is there a way for us to get a better depth of knowledge about numbers and real statistics and facts about what's actually happening, not so much the county level, but drill into actual Garden Grove numbers? Is that a possibility for us?
I believe that, this is Omar, I believe that the health officer is not providing death information to the individual cities due to HIPAA and privacy concerns. And I think that we could get that information if we had our own health officer, our own health department, to adopt orders guiding our community, but because our health department is the county, we follow the county's health officer's directions on our activities in response to COVID-19 specifically. So the answer is, if we have our own health department, yes, we would definitely be getting that information, but we don't have our own health department, and I don't know what we would do with that information if we were to receive it, other than, you know, neighbors talking about other neighbors about, you know, who passed away and which communities, which neighborhoods are affected. I just don't know.
Councilmember Brightigan?
Go ahead, George.
Yeah, well, again, other cities have that information. If they have a health officer or not, I don't know. But my question would be, have we asked for the information? And the HIPAA stuff is disingenuous because you're not given specific information, you're given numbers, you're not given addresses, you're not, you're just given numbers. So that's disingenuous answer at best. So, you know, I would ask that we, you know, at least ask for the information before we speculate on why we don't have it. I haven't heard that we have asked for it, and honestly, I think it would be given, because I know certain cities have it, in Orange County, they have it, but we don't. And I know they're much smaller than us, so I doubt that they have a health officer. I know Long Beach has it, I know other cities, small cities in Los Angeles have it, in Los Angeles County have it, I know Fresno County, some of the smaller cities have it, they don't have health officers that I'm aware of. I just think that maybe we're not asking for this information. I mean, we're being asked to vote on a local emergency, and how do you make an educated decision if we don't have the numbers, if we don't have the facts? And we don't necessarily have to release those facts to the public. That could be confidential meeting, council meeting, you know, I mean, but the council should at least know those numbers.
Thank you. Others?
Mayor Jones, this is Councilmember Fatboy.
Please, go ahead.
I agree with Councilmember George. I lean towards voting yes to extend the emergency. However, I find our survey answers very disturbing to me. We are asking confidential, authentic, private information here. We just want to know the number of people who passed away because of coronavirus in our city. Just give us a number. Today, we had one person die, tomorrow, we don't have any person die, next week, we have one person die in Garden Grove because of the pandemic. We need those numbers. So saying that this is sensitive information without articulating why it is private and sensitive information that we're asking, we're not asking for whether it is in this neighborhood or in that neighborhood, let alone it happened in this district and not other districts. We, as the city of Garden Grove, ask for the specifics in our own city. We're not asking about Santa Ana or Anaheim or Mission Valley or Irvine. We ask the number of people who passed away in our own city, and that's all we need. So I don't see why the county could view that as, you know, they cannot give us because this is sensitive information. And even if they bring up that question, I would expect our city manager and our city survey would stop back, just, no, we are not asking for private or sensitive information. The information that we ask for is very relevant, and we should have that. Give us the reason why you cannot give us.
Mayor, members of the city council, this is Omar again. So the statement I made earlier pertaining to the county not releasing that information is basically what the county has told us. If you recall, initially, the county was not even going to tell us how many infected people there were in individual cities. There was a big debate countywide as to the county releasing that information, and ultimately the county does release information about how many infected individuals there are reported in its city. So that's what I was referring to. The council can definitely direct us to ask the county for death information, and we can definitely report back to the city council at the next meeting if that's what the city council wishes to do.
Councilmember Brightigan?
Go ahead, George.
Okay, I guess I'd ask it like this, Omar. If you're sitting in our shoes on the city council and you're being asked to make a factual, intelligent decision based on articulable facts, not by emotion, not by opinion, what would you do in our shoes without the information? Would you vote for something blindly, or would you request it? And if I was working for that council, wouldn't I expect that my council members would want that information before they made an informed factual decision and not based on emotion?
That's all I can ask.
I guess this is my frustration, is that I understand the importance of this. I understand why we need to do it to protect our renters, to protect our community, but we're voting without any information to extend a local emergency, and we don't really, truly know if a local emergency exists. We believe there is a local emergency, it appears there is, but we don't have any factual numbers to make that decision. So, I mean, that's kind of where I'm at.
Thank you. Any others wishing to speak on this?
Mayor Jones?
Councilmember Kim Wynn?
Kim Wynn, please.
Mayor Jones?
Hold on, can I hear from Kim?
But I asked.
I know, but you've already spoken. Correct. But I said, I said, is there anyone else other than the people that have spoken five times? So I'd like to hear from Kim. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I mean, for me, look, I would rather err on the side of caution. There's, we have 100, over 180 deaths in Garden Grove, that's 182 many. I believe that staff is working under advisement of the advisory committee that the mayor's working on, with our Governor Newsom's orders, with Orange County, with the information provided by the county. I have utmost trust in our staff is trying to move our city into the direction of reopening, but doing it cautiously. I would also say that I've been watching the Board of Supervisors meetings religiously for the last couple of weeks. They, true to the fact that our city attorney has mentioned, the county didn't want to give a lot of information that they're now providing, they are still not providing it down to the detail that's being requested, and if you feel that you need to see that, then I recommend that you reach out to our supervisor and to the rest of that board and request it. Maybe the city could issue a letter to them. I know that other. Thing, the information that's not being provided, that wasn't before, breaks it down by age, breaks it down by race and ethnicity, which wasn't being provided before. So I think that that's, you know, as the data comes in, they're able to follow those trends and track that and provide that to us. I would be very curious to see how many infected individuals we have in Garden Grove. I believe that number is probably higher than we imagine. So I just want to say that I support this item, and I think that we should always operate with caution and make sure that as we do things, we take under advisement the way that other cities are moving, and we're following in line with the rest of the county as far as being cautious and doing things very thoughtfully as we reopen the city of Garden Grove.
Thank you. Fat, go ahead.
Okay. I think Councilman George Prattingham intends to, I think he understands the, you know, the nature of the emergency, and so do I. Like I mentioned earlier at the beginning of the discussion, that I intend to forecast to continue with the emergency orders. However, I agree with Councilman Prattingham that we need to have that information, and we should press the county. The county can always, you know, insist on refusing to give us, but I think we need to press them for that. I don't like being told, no, you cannot have it, and then walk away with it. The person who says that we have to give me a good reason why they do not give me the information, and I do not agree with Omar that the county, at first, reluctant to give the information, the breakdown proceeding. Now, there may be different interpretation of why they're doing that. The way the county is doing is they publish, they publish the number of deaths in each city to the public so everyone knows. Everyone know how many deaths would be in Irvine, how many deaths would be in. Everyone know how many deaths would be in Irvine, how many deaths would be in other cities. No, I'm sorry. The county published the infection, people who pass positive per city and they make that public and at first they reluctant to do that because of sensitive issues, but then they finally they agreed to do that. We are not asking that to publish the number of people pass away per city. We do not, we don't care about how many die in Irvine, how many die in Santa Ana, how many die in Anaheim. We just want them to provide us the number for our city alone. They have that number and they do not have to give us the number of people dying in other cities, just our city alone. I think that is a reasonable request and I don't like the fact that we don't demand that. That's all I want to say.
Thank you. Anyone else who hasn't spoken want to weigh in on this?
Councilmember Brightigan or anybody else?
Well, okay, go ahead.
So basically, I want to pretty much back Kim Nguyen on this because I agree with her 100%. I think we need to do this. It's an important thing. We've got our community relying on us to provide the protections and stuff that goes with it, the grant funding, everything involved. I think we're kind of forced to vote on this tonight, but I think we can all unanimously agree that we need city staff to at least pry to get that information for us, especially for any future votes. I mean, it can be provided in closed session. It doesn't have to be made to the public, but, you know, we're making educated decisions. We need the facts and that's kind of where I'm at with this. Also, you know, while we're talking about, you know, the COVID and the things involving that, you know, we are starting to relax some of the restrictions now. And quite frankly, I'm inclined, I would prefer to just meet normal from now on or, you know, socially isolated in the community room or however, and, you know, get back to somewhat kind of normal on the council meetings. So, you know, with that being said, I think, you know, in some kind of way, we need to, you know, give indication to staff what our thoughts and feelings are on that particular subject as well so they can, you know, be guided by the group consensus.
Okay. For point of order, I'd like to urge us to stay focused on item 3B at the moment.
And I'll counter one point. I mean, I guess I'd say I'm generally curious about, you know, the breakdowns per city, but my guess is that the breakdown per city would probably coincide with the infections per city. If you sort of rationalized it out across the data that we do know, you could probably interpolate that information if it was that important. To me, I would argue it's not necessarily that important, the number of deaths on a city level. I can share with you, I've had weekly Zoom meetings with all 34 mayors in Orange County for the last month and those have been productive. And one encouraging thing that came out of that was all mayors, regardless of kind of just where they're coming from, have kind of agreed that Orange County is a region and that we need to kind of band together. We need to share ideas and sort of reopen in a smart and safe and sensible manner together and that kind of encouraging that no one city kind of gets rogue in that regard. So I think as eager as we all are to progress towards moving on past this and reopening, the reality is we're still under executive orders from the state level. And, you know, I don't see any productive reason to go against continuing, you know, our local emergency order until the appropriate time to remove it at this time. And I mean, I think there's obviously reimbursements related to that. There's grant opportunities related to that. There's opportunities for us to tap into that, that we would be foregoing if we did not continue this and cut it off too early. So from our own standpoint, I think that's something we need to consider and I think we are a region regardless. We don't operate in a vacuum here. So I don't think we can, I don't think we can be maverick in reopening very much, if any, faster than kind of the rest of Orange County is going to do in lockstep. And from my conversation with all the mayors, there's been a pretty cooperative and collaborative approach at saying, let's all share knowledge and ideas and let's get there as fast as we can together. We're all on the same page.
Any other comments or can I get a motion?
Motion to approve, Councilmember Kim Nguyen.
O'Neill.
Councilmember Tuha, one.
Kim Nguyen with Mayor Protam, second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Brightigan.
Yes.
Councilmember Deidre Nguyen.
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie.
Yes.
Councilmember Klumpenstein.
Yes.
Councilmember Kim Nguyen.
Yes.
Mayor Protam O'Neill.
Yes.
Mayor Jones.
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Okay, item 3C.
Item 3C is an approval of the Fourth Amendment to the agreement with the county of Orange to provide forensic services, and I believe Chief DeRay is here to give the report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. In front of you is a staff report recommending the approval of the Fourth Amendment of the agreement with the county of Orange to provide forensic services for the Garden Grove Police Department. Since 1996, the city has contracted with the county for forensic services. The Orange County Crime Lab is the only local forensic lab that can provide all the forensic services required by the City of Garden Grove. We have a five-year agreement with the county of Orange. Fiscal year 2016 to 2017 is the first year of the contract and fiscal year 2020 to 2021 will be the fourth year of this five-year agreement. A fiscal year 2020 to 2021 contract with Orange County Crime Lab provides the following level of service. One lead forensic specialist for 2,096 hours, one forensic scientist, three for 2,096 hours, one forensic specialist for 2,096 hours and aggregate overtime. The county reimburses the city the cost of all unused overtime. The crime lab provides all supplies and processing directly related to services performed. Under the terms of agreement, the current agreement with the county of Orange for forensic services expires on June 30th, 2020. The finance director has determined that the county of Orange is the new provider of the forensic services available. DNA is leading technology to gathering forensic evidence and crimes. Having a forensic scientist assigned to Garden Grove for case work dramatically reduce the time to obtain crime lab results. The full cost of providing the foregoing level of service for fiscal year 2021, correction, 2020 to 2021 is estimated to be $555,505. This is an increase of $23,396 from the current fiscal cost of $532,109. Additional cost will be included in fiscal year 2020 to 2021 continuation budget adjustment. It is recommended that City Council approve the Fourth Amendment to the agreement with the county of Orange to provide forensic services to the city in the amount of $555,505 for fiscal year 2020 to 2021 and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the city and make minor modifications thereto. This is the end of my staff report and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions, colleagues?
Councilmember Brightigan.
Councilmember Kim Nguyen. I'll second Kim Nguyen.
Oh, okay. Was that a motion and a second?
Yes.
Yes.
Got it. Okay, please roll call vote.
Councilmember Brightigan.
Yes.
Councilmember Deidre Nguyen.
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie.
Yes.
Councilmember Klumpenstein.
Yes.
Councilmember Kim Nguyen.
Yes.
Mayor Protam O'Neill.
Yes.
Mayor Jones.
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Thank you. We'll move on to item 3D and let me remind everyone to please mute if you're not speaking.
Item 3D is award a contract to RJ Noble Company for project number 7212, 7215, and 7292 for various arterial and residential street improvements. And I believe that Mr. Murray is here to give the report.
Thank you, Ms. Palmeroy, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. Tonight, the City Council is being asked to award a contract to RJ Noble Company for the rehabilitation of various street segments. Those streets are as follows. Booker Street from Lamson to Chapman Avenue. Euclid Street from Lamson to Chapman Avenue. Lamson Avenue from Brookers to Nelson Street. Magnolia Street from Shelley Drive to Cotella Avenue. Booker Street from Westminster Avenue to Trask Avenue. And LeVon, Russell, and Earl Streets, and they all intersect at Imperial Avenue. The road work will generally consist of full death reclamation and cement treatment of the base material and with asphalt paving on top. It also could involve cold milling and asphalt overlay, which may require digout areas to repair sporadic failures. And we also have areas that will just receive a slurry seal. Concrete work may include the construction of new curb and gutter, catch bases, medium curb, and drive approaches. It will also include the repair of damaged PCC sidewalk, or concrete sidewalk, curb and gutter, cross gutters, upgrade of access ramps, and the project will be finished by signing and striping. All work is to be completed at a cost of just under $5 million. Staff received an open three bids on April 29th of this year and determined that RJ Noble was the lowest responsible bidder. Should the council decide to award the contract tonight, the contractor can begin work by July and should be complete by the end of the year. This project was included in this year's capital improvement plan and will be paid for with gas tax, Measure M2 fair share funds, and the California State Tire Recycling Grant. This concludes staff's report and I'm available should you have any questions.
Thank you, Bill. Colleagues, any questions? Motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Who motioned that first?
I think it was Tuha.
Okay. O'Neill will second. Okay. Tuha followed by O'Neill. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Brightigan.
Yes.
Councilmember Deidre Nguyen.
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie.
Yes.
Councilmember Klumpenstein.
Yes.
Councilmember Kim Nguyen.
Yes.
Mayor Protam O'Neill.
Yes.
Mayor Jones.
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Thank you. Okay, that gets us through items. We move on to ordinances presented for second reading and adoption. We have two of them, 4A and 4B. Let's start with 4A.
4A is the second reading of ordinance number 2914 entitled, "An Ordnance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove Amending Provisions of Chapter 252 of Title II of the Garden Grove Municipal Code, Increasing Public Works Contracts and thresholds to Conform with State Law."
Thank you. I'll move it.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Councilmember Brightigan.
Yes.
Councilmember Deidre Nguyen.
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie.
Yes.
Councilmember Klumpenstein.
Yes.
Councilmember Kim Nguyen.
Yes.
Mayor Protam O'Neill.
Yes.
Mayor Jones.
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Thank you. 4B.
4B is second reading of ordinance number 2915 entitled, "An Ordnance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove Adding Chapter 214 to Title II of the Garden Grove Municipal Code Relating to Electronic Filing of Campaign Finance Disclosure Statements."
So move.
I motion to approve. I did it first, George.
You did. I heard you. I'll second it.
All right, Kim Nguyen seconded by George Brightigan. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Brightigan.
Yes.
Councilmember Deidre Nguyen.
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie.
Yes.
Councilmember Klumpenstein.
Yes.
Councilmember Kim Nguyen.
Yes.
Mayor Protam O'Neill.
Yes.
Mayor Jones.
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Thank you. Okay, that takes us on to matters and we do have an agendized 5A Coronavirus Emergency Operation Command update presented by City Manager Scott Stiles, including several different subsections.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We do have quite a bit of information that we've got to, we want to go through with you this evening. So in the spirit of brevity here, I'm going to make just some brief comments. I do want to make a couple of points about things that have happened since our last, since our last council meeting. I think council members in the community know that on April 28th, the Orange County Board of Supervisors issued Orange County Business Guidelines for reopening. And so we're kind of moving into this stage, as a number of you have mentioned this evening about, you know, how do we reopen our economy? I know Councilman Brightigan, you've mentioned a couple of times about, you know, getting our roadmap together so we have a plan. And we've talked to a number of the rest of you about thoughts as well. So in the spirit of those new rules that they issued, there's additional things that our staff has been involved in doing. Our Community Services Department just on April 30th announced a new virtual recreation class program. And I think Director John Montanches will be speaking about that a little bit later, offering virtual recreation classes, programs, workshops, et cetera. All that can be found on our Garden Grove website, ggcity.org/virtual-classes. You'll be hearing more about that. The county did initiate their Great Plates Delivered Program. It's a program to help both seniors and the business community connect for meals to seniors while at the same time letting our restaurants participate as a way to stay afloat during these struggling times. And again, this is a program that can be found on our, on our ggcity.org/coronavirus website. There's a tremendous amount of information there. Council members will know with some of the new guidance put out by the state on May 8th, last Friday, we opened some of our tennis and handball court facilities to the public. That was reopened under six-foot social distancing restrictions. And we've, through Public Works, we've installed signage at the park tennis courts outlining those guidelines of six feet distancing between individuals. And again, you can go online and see all the restrictions that go along with that, but that was in an effort to kind of slowly but cautiously begin the reopening process. And over the weekend, we, Mayor Jones and I, put out another press release discussing how the City of Garden Grove intends to move forward with prudent caution and optimism, urging low-risk businesses to avoid the spread of coronavirus by obeying state and county healthcare guidelines as we move into that stage two of reopening. As council members know. As council members know, under the governor's stage-two guidelines, low-risk businesses such as bookstores, retail and florists adhering to state health and safety guidance have been allowed to open with curbside service. Manufacturing companies and warehouses meeting cleaning and physical distancing guidelines have also been allowed to operate with work environment modifications. And of course, the city will continue working with the Orange County Healthcare Agency and follow the state's four-stage business recovery guidelines, as well as regularly communicating with local businesses to offer resources and guidance. I will mention that the city is intending to cautiously open with restrictions our city hall on Monday, May 18th, this coming Monday, and will be communicating more with both the public and our own staff starting tomorrow, following this council meeting as we get ready for that. I think Councilman Brightigan mentioned the issue of council meetings and when we should get back to maybe having meetings that are not virtual. It's something that the staff has been talking about. We do want to get more guidance from the council on that, about when the council feels ready to do that. One of the things that's important to us that we think you might also want to think about is when we do come back, maybe we don't come back into the council chambers itself, which is, as you know, is fairly small and tight. We do have experience in holding council meetings in the large Committee Room A. It's something that we've done many times before. It would allow those of you as council members to maintain your own social distancing on the dais while at the same time allowing people that insist on coming to the meetings to social distance there themselves. We want to greatly thank the public. We've been putting out for all these meetings notices for the public to send in their comments and quotes via email so that they can be read and not come to the council meetings. I know, I know that's been a great relief to some of the staff that have had to work in the council chambers during our meetings. And the fact that people have really followed those guidelines has been, has been a great relief to our staff that have to open that. So when we do reopen, we're thinking about how do we sanitize beforehand? How do we sanitize afterwards? How do we, you know, take care of all those duties? We have police officers that are at the facility providing, you know, oversight in the room. So we want to be thinking about that. We want to be thinking about your safety as well as everyone else's safety and particularly the public. So, you know, we're all anxious to get back to meetings as we know them to be, but we do want to do it safely and responsibly. So we do look forward to your guidance on that. So with that, what I'd like to do is mention, so we have four presentations that we want to go through tonight. The first one is our reopening playbook that we've spent a good bit of time putting together. And I want to particularly thank Maria Stipe and Lisa Kim, our Assistant City Managers, for doing a tremendous, tremendous amount of work on getting this document prepared, along with Anna Polito, Sean Park in my office, and Anna Gould in the IT Department did a lot of work with the graphics to try and get this information together. It's been posted on our website. It's available for everybody to take a look at. And it's got a tremendous amount of information that we think is important to the public. So in just a minute, I'm going to introduce Maria Stipe to walk us through that playbook. After that, we're going to have John Montanes is on standby and he's going to be prepared to talk to us a little bit about the plans that his department and Community Services has for this summer. What he can try to do to keep some things going and other challenges that he has. Following that, Chief DeRay is going to be giving you a brief update on the state of public safety in the city, issues that they're working through and thinking about. And then finally, we'll conclude with Patricia Song, our Finance Director, who will give us the third of four financial reports that she's been preparing for you. We'll do another report from Finance in two weeks. We want to track this information closely and make sure that you're critically involved in all of this, the decisions related to revenue and budgeting and everything that goes along with it. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Assistant City Manager Maria Stipe, who will kind of walk us through the playbook that we put together for reopening Garden Grove. So Maria?
Thank you, City Manager Stiles. Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. As Scott mentioned, this is Maria Stipe, and I just want to check in and make sure everybody can hear me. Everybody, anybody hear me?
Yes, sure. Yeah, we can hear you.
Yes.
Okay, very, very good. I'll keep going then. I'm very pleased to present the city's plan or playbook for reopening City of Garden Grove operations and businesses in this strange new age of COVID-19. The playbook has been put in place at the request of the city council as a tool to help us cautiously and safely move forward with reopening. The plan focuses specifically on Garden Grove city operations, including city hall and other city facilities, as well as providing guidance for our Garden Grove businesses as they also plan and prepare to reopen. From the beginning, we've diligently followed the state of California and Orange County Healthcare Agency guidance as we'll continue to do going forward. As all of you know, Governor Newsom's resilience roadmap delineates four stages. Stage one focused on safety and preparedness. And stage four focuses on reopening the highest risk venues and workplaces. So we are now currently in stage two of the reopening process, reopening lower-risk workplaces as City Manager Stiles just mentioned. Our first step in stage two will be the modified reopening of Garden Grove City Hall on Monday, May 18th. So this coming up Monday, and we want to do that in a way that protects individuals from exposure to COVID-19 and also helps prevent the virus's spread. So with that, if you refer to page seven of your, of the playbook, you'll see some of the general information on what we're going to be doing here at City Hall as we reopen for business. But we will absolutely be implementing and maintaining six-foot social distance or physical distance between individuals. We'll be utilizing personal protective equipment. All of our employees should be wearing personal protective equipment as is appropriate for their particular work function. So you'll definitely be seeing employees at the counters wearing face coverings and certain employees out in the field wearing face shields and gloves dependent on their job responsibilities. Of course, we'll have signage reminding everybody to practice good hygiene. We'll also be maximizing our delivery of public services remotely whenever possible. And then we are increasing the space between our city employees and customers. And we do have, we have installed plexiglass barriers or guards between our customers and our city employees as a safety precaution. And then lastly, we'll be employing enhanced sanitation of the high-traffic areas at City Hall and other community facilities. That's going to be ongoing into the future. And as we open, the city is going to be requiring face coverings for all individuals entering City Hall. So this is going to be very similar to what's already in place in the private sector as you go into Costco and places like that. So we will have signs posted at the main entrance of City Hall reminding the public of this new requirement. We'll also be having signage in place that reminds people that if they do have fever or symptoms of COVID-19 that they should not enter the workplace. We have designed a queuing system with clearly defined floor decals to ensure individuals maintain that six-foot separation. And again, this would be very similar to what you're seeing in the business places that are currently open at the shopping centers and, and places like that. So we will have contactless hand sanitizing stations and again, visible signage reminding everybody of the six-foot distance. We will have controlled public access to all of the public service counters. And we have, as I mentioned, installed temporary physical partitions or plexiglass barriers at all of the public service counters. We have implemented an online by appointment system for building and safety, planning, engineering, the city clerk's office, and the housing authority services. We also have implemented contactless payment options via credit card for building and planning, plan checks, building inspections and permitting fees. We've established ingress and egress to and from the restrooms to mitigate overcrowding and proximity in public areas. And we have also implemented virtual public service delivery options. So for the key online services where we are offering virtual City Hall services, that would include registration for recreation classes, payment of business taxes, applications for business license, water bill payment, water service inquiries, and start and stop service. We have engineering services offered online, our HR service information, job opportunities and so forth also offered online. We have online plan check services, virtual building inspection and planning services. So definitely maximizing all of our online resources to again, just maximize the safety for the public and also to streamline and make, make services available remotely to the greatest and convenient, to the greatest extent feasible. So that's in a nutshell what's happening here at City Hall and we'll be implementing similar protocols and practices in our off-site facilities as well. And then I'm going to kind of shift gears here just for a moment and talk about the additional guidance that we're going to be providing or that is provided in the playbook for reopening our Garden Grove businesses. So within the playbook, we have links that are provided to the city's website and Business Resource Toolkit. And the Business Resource Toolkit, Lisa Kim shared a lot about that in the prior council meetings, but this includes all of the programs that have been previously shared with the city council through the Garden Grove Business Resource and Resiliency Plan. And then it includes information on the Jobs First Grant Program and the Small Business Administration Loan and Paycheck Protection Programs. So obviously, this information is accessible on our website, but also, you know, provides specific directions on how to access that information within the handbook. We've also included a lot of very great information, general resources for how our businesses can keep their workplaces safe. And more specific guidance is provided for the various business sectors, including construction, food services, manufacturing, office and professional services, and general retail. Links are likewise provided for California's Coronavirus Response webpage, which includes the governor's resiliency roadmap. That's an excellent resource and we do have a link to that also on our webpage, but we draw specific attention to that. We have resources to CalOSHA, the Center for Disease Control, and also included some very informative updates from the governor on the California's pandemic roadmap and also the Orange County Healthcare Agency COVID-19 update and plan for reopening. So all of this information is very positive and proactive. I think a great resource to assist our city staff and business community with reopening in this new COVID-19 reality that we're living within. So we'll be, the last thing I want to mention is that we, our staff will be making regular updates to keep the guidance current and relevant. And I do know that the state of California is also issuing guidance for all of the specific businesses as they are allowed to reopen. So we'll definitely be including and linking to that information on our future updates. So with that, I am available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Maria. Colleagues, any questions for Maria? Okay. Thanks a bunch for the update on the playbook and we'll move on to John Montanes' Community Services update, if you're around. John, you there?
Yes, good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and members of city council. Tonight, I want to share an update regarding Community Services Plan, plans for the summer programming and the status of the community centers and facilities. Before I start, I want to clarify that the plans for summer programming and community facilities are based on the best interpretation of the guidelines set forth by the CDC, the California Parks and Recreation Society, state and local health agencies as of today. If for any reason new and specific guidelines are developed, these plans will be altered, these plans will be altered and changed, which can lead to canceling and or postponement of programs and activities. Also, low enrollment enabling the city to recover the program cost will also play a factor in any cancellation of any fee-based programs. To begin, there are three divisions that make up the Community Services summer programs. They are Recreation, which include contract classes, aquatics, day camp, and summer concerts. Human Services, which includes the Family Resource Centers and the Senior Center. And Facilities, which includes the Community Meeting Center, Courtyard Center, and Park Amenities and Sports Fields. I will start with Recreation. Today, we have canceled all contract classes through the end of May. We anticipate we will be canceling additional onsite classes through June. Classes in July and August are still available at gg parks and rec.com. And any updates on canceled classes will be posted on this website. As an alternative to onsite classes, staff has worked hard to develop an extensive list of virtual summer contract classes that residents can sign up online and do for the safety of their own home. These classes are fee-based and are instructed by a live private instructor using a conference platform such as Zoom. These classes are currently available for registration at gg parks and rec.com under the Virtual Rec Center icon. Also listed in the Virtual Rec Center page are tons of free online resources and programs for families to enjoy. For some of, for some of the other Community Services onsite programs, such as day camp and aquatics, as of today, there are no specific guidelines identified by the CDC that establishes social distancing. For the meantime, staff has looked into modifications to the programs that would allow for some social distancing. However, complete social distancing would likely not be possible. As an alternative for day camp, staff is looking into putting together a virtual day camp curriculum that parents can register for a fee to include all materials and supplies with daily staff teleconferencing instructing participants through numerous activities. For the aquatics program, staff has modified the class structure, which would limit classes to eight participants. This will allow for social distancing, social distancing within the pool. However, there will be a requirement that a parent or guardian be in the water instructing the participant while the aquatic instructor stays on deck demonstrating swimming techniques and safety instructions. Community Services has identified May 22nd as a date to meet enrollment thresholds and receive clear guidance from the CDC or state health agencies before moving forward with any of our onsite programs. For programs such as youth sports where social distancing is not possible, staff will identify, will indefinitely postpone these programs until there's clear, clearly identified, until they are clearly identified as potential three or stage three or stage four activities as outlined by the state's reopening plan. Also, larger skilled gatherings will not be permitted at the park until stage four of the state's plan. Given these restrictions, summer concerts will be canceled for the month of July. If the state moves into a stage four reopening in August, concert dates in August will remain as scheduled and an extension into September is being considered. Also, staff is looking into a drive-in movie option. Also, staff is looking into a drive-in movie option for late summer, early fall. The Human Services Division will vastly modify their programming in the summer. The two Family Resource Centers are exploring virtual options for the youth and family programs. Currently, staff at those sites are strictly focused on providing meal distribution to their respective participants and continue to intake clients for counseling and classes via phone and Zoom appointments. Both centers are working closely with the families to help identify their needs and providing resources. Both centers will remain closed until a stage three for smaller gatherings and stage four for larger gatherings. The Senior Center will remain closed to the public, but will also have, has also modified all programming for the summer. It will continue to distribute its drive-up or delivery meal program to four to 500 seniors weekly, as well as making wellness check calls and providing resources to the seniors. The Facilities Division is working diligently to continue to inform the park users to maintain six feet social distancing. Low-risk facilities such as tennis courts and hammock courts have been reopened with strict guidelines identified by the CDC and the U.S. Tennis Association. All other higher-risk facilities and park amenities such as playgrounds, the Alanis Place Center, restrooms, skate spots, outdoor fitness equipment, smaller park meeting buildings, and small scaled meetings at the Community Meeting Center will reopen with strict restrictions during stage three, unless otherwise specifically identified by the state's regulations to suspend opening until stage four. Stage four will open up all sports facilities, large-scale theater events, the dog park, large-scale park special events, the large community center events, and the senior center. Community Services will continue to monitor new state and local guidelines that will provide for more direct guidance on programs, facilities, and parks, and will adjust accordingly. This concludes my report and I'm available for any questions.
Officer Brightigan?
Go ahead, George.
Yeah. John, I love this idea of the drive-in theater. Can you elaborate on that? How will that, how will that be implemented?
So we're looking, right now, we're trying to figure out the logistics. We're trying to identify a large parking area. We've contacted the Christ Cathedral and are working right now, working, trying to get information back and forth to see if there's a possibility that we can use their parking area to then have a large inflatable screen or work with some local vendors that have large screens. And then also try to work with a company that can provide an FM signals transmitter that then the participants would come in their cars, they'd have enough access to stay within some social distancing within their cars, and then also be able to see a large screen and tune into a radio station that would allow them to listen to the sound of a particular movie. There's a lot of logistics that go behind this. We're still trying to work out with the vendors, we're trying to work out with what the cost would be. Like I said, we looked at the Christ Cathedral and we're probably going to look at some other larger parking lots within the city to see if there's a possibility to do this.
Yeah, I think that's a wonderful idea, John. You know, it's why they pay you the big bucks. So, you know, kudos on that. You might want to reach out to the Elks Lodge, they have a large parking lot, as do our LDS churches, they'd probably be, jump all over the bit to help with any of that. My other question, the pool hours for the public for free swim, you know, just the normal public hours, are those going to be modified or changed or will the public still be able to utilize the pools?
So right now, given the fact that our pools are not your standard 25-meter pools, there isn't enough room to do social distancing within those pools. If we were to open them up, you know, there would be very limited space, a very limited number of folks that would be allowed to go in if we were to incorporate social distancing. And even, even so, in such free rec programs, free rec swim programs that we have, the point is that you're there to socialize with your neighbors and your friends and so on and so forth. So it's, right now, it's difficult to say that until we hit stage four, we don't have, we don't have any plans to open up for rec swim. But once we hit stage four, we will look to see how we can make that possible. There's a cost involved, which we're trying to work out to see if we can make that, make that available.
Okay. Thank you very much, John.
Thank you. Any other questions of John, Community Services?
All right, cool. Let's move along to Public Safety Update by Chief Deray.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, I wanted to take this opportunity to brief you on the status of crime that is affecting our public safety. In early April, the California Judicial Council issued a statewide emergency order setting bail at $0 for most misdemeanor and lower-level felony offenses. This was the curb COVID-19 in the jails. Additionally, hundreds of nonviolent inmates were released from Orange County Jail and thousands of prisoners were released from prisons across the state. The zero bail has had a major impact on public safety in Garden Grove. The following is a comparison between March and April. These numbers are what we have in. Our sexual assault or rape has dropped for a decrease of 57%. Robbery is an increase of 28%. Aggravated assault, increase of 50%. That would be felony assault. Simple assault, which would be your misdemeanor assault, up 50%. Burglary, up 40%. Auto theft, up 89%. Violent crime has increased from March to April 38% and property crime has increased 35%. Now, the following is our crime rate year-to-date from January 1st to April 30th. Rape, we're at 0%, so we have had no increases. Robbery, we're at an increase of 11%. Aggravated assault, 55% increase. Simple assault, no increase. Burglary is a 6% increase. Auto theft was an 18% increase. Our violent crime, year-to-date, a 14% increase, and property crime has actually decreased 10%. From March 1st to April 30th, we arrested over 729 individuals and arrested over 68 repeat offenders who were released and committed a criminal offense during this raiding time. So the next thing I want to talk about is the Fourth of July. That's it for our public safety. But the Fourth of July is a holiday we're all proud of. The Garden Grove Police Department is aware that many of our community members are suffering based on the economy and the quarantine orders that have been put in place. We understand that the Fourth of July is a time for us to be with families and celebrate this holiday. This is why the Garden Grove Police Department is supportive of the sale of legal, safe, and sane fireworks for the Fourth of July. Governor Newsom has placed strict guidelines in his state order that focuses on social distancing to minimize the spread of COVID-19. The county has additionally placed restrictions to avoid the spread of COVID-19. Based on the state and county restrictions not allowing the city of Garden Grove to have permitted block parties, we will not be able to, we will be unable to issue any block party permits this year. We will have a Fourth of July deployment this year that will enforce the illegal fireworks with $1,000 administrative citations. In the near future, I will prepare a PowerPoint presentation for council, but will not publicize any deployment model changes. I also want to thank Tam Nguyen, the owner of Advanced Beauty College, and Councilwoman Tuhan Nguyen for a quick response to provide much-needed PPE equipment to the Boys and Girls Club of Garden Grove. That is the end of my report and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions? All right, thanks again. Let's move on to our final report, Financial Update by Patricia Song, if you're around.
Yes, Mayor. I'm going to share my screen for my presentation. Hopefully, everyone can see it. Something tells me that I cannot start the screen share while other participant is sharing. So anyways, let me just start with my...
I guess.
Okay, there it is. Perfect. So, good evening, Mayor and council members. This is Patricia Song, Finance Director. As previously mentioned, this is the third update we're going to provide you in regards to the financial impact caused by the COVID-19 pandemic. The crisis caused by the pandemic is not as normal or as a normal fiscal crisis. The impact of it cannot be quantified and no expert can gauge the duration of the impact as of yet. Therefore, in this update, we are presenting you with a few scenarios with the focus on budgetary impacts for next fiscal year. First, let me update you with our damage assessment as of April 30th. We estimated total fiscal year-to-date damage in the amount of 12.8 million, among which over 300,000 is indirect non-personnel costs. Total direct personnel cost is close to 700,000, represent over 14,000 man-hours, including nearly 500 hours of overtime. Among the total damage, over 90% is due to projected revenue loss. We estimate 5.1 million in loss of sales tax, including 2.4 in major oil through June 30th, and 6.3 million in hotel visitors tax or TOT through end of May this year. If we factor in the month of June, loss of TOT revenue would be 8.7 million.
Patricia?
Yes.
Hold on one sec. Can I remind everyone, can I remind everyone to mute again one more time? Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. So if we factor the June's loss for TOT revenue, our total revenue loss would be over 14 million. And these estimates do not include the cash flow impact due to the various deferral implemented by the city or the state's sales tax deferral program. Moving on to the second, the next slide, as we previously shared, the city is heavily dependent upon sales tax and TOT revenues to fund for our essential services, including public safety, community services, and infrastructure maintenance. Sales tax and TOT revenue occupies roughly 50% of total general fund revenue. The COVID crisis poses a direct threat towards these two revenue bases. Due to the significance of the sales tax and TOT revenue, we have performed a sensitivity study focusing on these two revenue sources. The slide here shows a, shows the adopted budget and the estimate we presented to you in our last meeting. And tonight, we call that scenario as the baseline scenario. The baseline scenario held the expenditure same as our adopted budget, with the exception of 294,000 increase in personnel costs due to the additional two parking patrol positions added during the current fiscal year. On the revenue side, for easier illustration, we also held all other revenue items the same as our adopted budget, except for sales tax and TOT. In early April, our sales tax consultant, HDL, shared that they project a decrease in sales tax equivalent to 15% comparing to fiscal year 2018-19 actual amount. For TOT, we assumed revenue would drop 20% from fiscal year 2018-19, that's last year. So that is the baseline scenario, and we use this assumption projected a 5.4 million deficit for next fiscal year. So today, I'm presenting you with two additional scenarios to prepare for worst-case situations and keep in mind that situation can get even worse as we, you know, this whole pandemic prolonged. Scenario one assumes that sales tax will drop an additional 5% from the baseline scenario and TOT decrease by 30% from fiscal year 18-19 instead of 20%. This would, for some reason, they changed the screen, this would become a, this would result in an additional 4.6 million in revenue losses, bringing total deficit to 10 million. And scenario two assumes sales tax drops 25% from 2018-19 and TOT at 60% of the 2018-19 level. Deficit would become 14.5 million for next fiscal year. These deficit amounts are significantly higher than the baseline scenario. And since no one has any idea right now how fast the economy will rebound and, you know, it is necessary for us to prepare for these more drastic and longer-lasting impacts. So moving on to the next slide. This one is a snapshot of the various balancing measures staff has been exploring to bridge the gap for all three scenarios. As previously shared, we anticipate a moderate surplus in the amount of 3.2 million for the current fiscal year, mostly due to the strong economy in the first eight months of the year. The surplus will be used to partially offset the projected deficit for next year. Additionally, we are looking into three broad areas to balance next year's budget. They are budget savings, cost reductions, and one-time sources. Budget savings are not actual savings. It is a reduction to the original budget or appropriate funding. In this case, we're estimating 2.2 million in budget savings that can be used to close our gap. The 2.2 million includes 1.9 in savings from vacancy. Per direction from city manager's files on cost containment, the city is under a hiring freeze, with the exception of public safety swarm positions and certain positions funded by enterprise funds. We took all the vacancies in the general fund, other than the swarm positions, added fringe benefits, and came up with 1.9 million. These positions are not removed from the authorized position list, but will be temporarily removed from next year's adopted budget in order to achieve the budget savings. The remaining 270,000 is anticipated from our contract with OCFA. When we adopted our two-year budget in June last year, OCFA did not have the contract amount for year two yet. In February, this February, OCFA provided an estimate to assist the member agencies to formulating their budget, and the amount is about 270,000 lower than what we have included in our two-year budget. So we will have the final numbers by June 1st, and any changes can be, will be incorporated in our budget workshop. The next two slides, I will walk you through on the various cost-reduction measures we're proposing, as well as the available one-time funding that we are going to be used, are going to be used to close the budget gap. This slide shows the proposed cost reduction. Under the baseline scenario, we're proposing 30% reduction in travel, training, and conferences funded by the general fund, equivalent to approximately 58,000. This is also consistent with the cost containment direction given by our city manager. Additional cost reduction is necessary under scenarios one and two. We are proposing a 16% reduction in fleet internal service charge, translating to about 836,000 of the general fund savings. Please note that we are not cutting the funding to our fleet management internal service fund operations. The 16% comes from the charge the internal service fund collects each year for replacement reserves. As you may know, we, when we set the internal service charge for fleet rental rates, we factor in the current year's fleet fund's operating cost and additional amount to build the reserves for equipment replacement. This is a good and prudent financial practice, and because of that, as of June 30th, 2019, the fund held a healthy reserve exceeding 125% of the fund's asset's original acquisition costs. And 125% is a typical benchmark for asset replacement reserves. So therefore, staff is comfortable of proposing a temporary suspending of the replacement charge for one year, and this will not impact the health of the internal service fund condition. We're also proposing a 25% reduction, equivalent to 126,000 in the funding for temporary and seasonal staffing for certain recreational programs. John has previously shared his plan for the summer, and due to the pandemic, various summer programs will be impacted, and we have discussed about the potential reduction of the programs, and we anticipate a 25% decrease in temporary and seasonal staffing need is achievable. As part of the cost-reduction effort, we're also looking into a few non-mended supplementals that was approved during our biannual budget last year. These projects include holiday lighting fixture upgrade in the amount of 37,000. This amount was originally planned to allow... This amount was originally planned to allow us to upgrade existing power sources. This is a project that was to be phased in over five years, and this year was the first, first phase. We're proposing to put the upgrade on hold for a year. Second item is the Main Street West Parking Lot Maintenance Project in the amount of 96,000. Business owners had been complaining about condition, about the condition of the parking lot, and Public Works Department was planning to do a asphalt repair and restriping next year. With the uncertainty of economy condition, economic condition, we are proposing to defer this capital spending by a year as well. The third item is for 20,000 for, for Community Economic Development Department's fee study to reset the fees for permit and plan check in an effort to achieve cost recovery. We're not certain at this point if we shall or, you know, should be increasing fees in light of the economic situation, and therefore, we would like to postpone the, the fee study for a year. And finally, the last item was the parks reseating project for 15,000. If you recall, funding level were decreased during the fiscal year 2018-19 budget before the city passed Measure O. This supplemental from last year to fund for additional 15,000 is trying to bring back the park reseating project or, you know, the level to its original funding level. The 15,000 would have paid for reseating for one park to restore the turf at a high-use areas. This year, we funded the park, the park reseating for about $53,000. And in order to complete the planned reseating project, staff requested this, for this additional 15,000. But we're asking, we're proposing, perhaps we could defer this for one year. So, the total cost reduction, reduction effort as described above totaled to 1.2 million. Moving on to the next slide. Cost reduction along with budget savings is still not sufficient to cover the anticipated deficit under scenario two, one and two. So, this slide here lists three aspects of resources that will be tapped into, in addition to the 3.2 anticipated surplus, and these are the one-time sources. We would need to use 500,000 previously set aside in the general fund's fund balance for potential property tax lawsuit. This money has been reserved for many years. And in December 2019, the city council passed a general fund reserve policy. So, the small isolated reserve amounts will no longer be needed. And following our new policy guidelines, we are proposing to release the 500,000 for one-time use to reduce next year's deficit. In the fleet internal service fund, as of June 30th, 2019, we have 2.5, 2.5 million set aside for replacement of certain fire equipment. Since the city has transitioned its fire protection service to OCFA, this reserve fund is no longer needed, and the money can be transferred to the general fund for one-time use as well. Additional funds are necessary to balance our budget. It can be coming from the current unreserved fund balance in the general fund. This, this fund balance is really a accumulation in, from prior years by the net change to, you know, the operating results plus one-time money plus transfers. And unreserved fund balance can be used for any purposes following the guidelines established by the city's reserves policy. Instead of using the unreserved fund balance, the city could also tap into our newly established stability reserve, which is currently holds 22.5 million in the stability reserve account. And this is following the city's new policy on general fund reserves, that we had a, a goal to fund for two months of the general fund's operating costs or operating revenues. But also, please keep in mind that in our policy, we also have restrictions of the use of this stability reserve. It does require city council's approval, and it does require a repayment plan to be approved at the same time that we're borrowing this money from this particular reserves account. And the repayment term has to be within 10 years since the, the date we borrowed the funds from. So, uncertainty requires both caution and actions. Just hoping to hang on, it's not going to be the right strategy. We therefore proposed these budget savings and cost-reduction measures with the use of existing fund balance as the last resort. Again, staff do not recommend tapping into the reserves or existing fund balance before we exhaust the budget savings and cost-reduction options. Moving on to the next slide. I want to bring to your attention that we, the above analysis did not take into consideration of the supplemental requests that we have been receiving from the departments, starting from last week. This is for our continuation budget for next year. Due to the, due to the revenue constraints for next year's additional funding request, we only, we limited those into three categories. The first category is the city council, state, or federal mandates. These include the increase to contracts already approved by the city council or projects that are already legally required to be completed by the city. Second category is revenue-enhancing projects. For these projects, we do put a restriction or caveat on it because of the cash flow constraints we're under. We're asking that department would only consider the ones that will bring the positive cash flow within 12 months following the initial cash flow outflow for the projects or proposed project. Only those items will be considered. And the last category is the grant awards. These are previously awarded grants that requires matching funds from the city. New grants requiring general fund matching will be considered on a case-by-case basis. So, in my next update on May 26th, I will provide a series of recommendations incorporating the supplemental requests and the new information we, we acquire. We also welcome our employees and officials to, you know, bring ideas on cost containment or budget reduction, and we will include those suggestions as well in the next update. This concludes my presentation. I appreciate your time, and I welcome any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia. Always so straightforward and so well articulated, so we appreciate that. Colleagues, any questions or comments?
Councilmember Brightigan?
Yeah, please, go ahead.
Yes, sir. So, my, my question, the budget reserve you're referring to, is that the rainy day fund, basically?
That is correct. The stability reserve is the rainy day fund. But we also ask to have another category, that's the catastrophic. For that bucket, we have not funded anything yet.
Okay, so the stability reserve fund, you're, you're, that's basically our rainy day fund. And, you know, to my mind, I don't know that this, it could get any rainier than what it's gotten. What's the criteria for utilizing those funds?
I agree with you, Councilmember Brightigan. This is, can be considered a crisis, and we can definitely tap into that. The, the unique situation the city holds right now, and it's very fortunate, is that we do have the unreserved fund balance still at hand, that we can dispense those funds first before we touch our reserves. The reserves is a commitment that we are going to have a, a plan in place. It helps us if we have to go out for a bond financing. It shows that we have planned ahead, we have put money aside for a particular purpose. And you're absolutely correct, under the circumstance, we can tap into that fund. However, we have the unreserved amounts that is available for, to fund for this one-time need. And we're hoping to just utilizing that, and we can get over this until we assess the situation again, if additional funds that's needed. And definitely, that will be the next step that we have to utilize those funds from the reserve, from the rainy day funds.
Well, my, my, my question goes to, you know, the needed cuts and whatnot. Is it possible that we, you know, eliminate like the fire engine money? Obviously, we don't need to use that anymore, and, and some of those other things you mentioned. And then proxy a little of the stability fund into that, so we don't have to make so many budget cuts to the different departments? I mean, I'd like to see, you know, parks maybe not get so many cuts and, you know, if, if we can avoid it and still maintain our good credit rating and get bonds and stuff. I, I, I don't necessarily think we need to drain the stability reserve, but wouldn't, wouldn't it be wise to at least use some of that fund so we don't have to make such drastic cuts?
Yes, that, that is the policy direction. We definitely welcome any inputs. Any of the spending that is requiring, considered to be priority, we definitely should be funding it. And the reserves is there to be, to be utilized. It's just from the, the typical practice that we look into potential cost reduction, not impacting the essential services, not impacting our, you know, services to the community. And then, if we can do from there, we will do. Other than that, if, if the projects that we're proposing to be reduced or removed or postponed, we can definitely bring back for discussion. This is just an illustration of different ideas that staff has been put together for consideration only.
I see, I see. And my last comment is, you know, for the first half of your presentation, the, the slides weren't working, but then, once they started working, they're awesome.
Oh, thank you.
I can read them, I can see them, so kudos on that.
Thank you.
Cool. Colleagues, any other questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, O'Neill?
Yeah, go for it.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you. There's a lot to take in. I, I truly appreciate the reports by Patricia Song, Chief DeRay, John Montanches, Maria Stipe. I am so proud to be part of this city and represent this city when we have such a, a great city manager, a department head, staff, down to the last worker in Garden Grove. You guys have been progressively ahead of the curve on adapting to this COVID-19 with reopening the city and all that. You know, where other people maybe sit back and wait for things to happen, you guys have been way ahead of it. And, and, and it takes a lot of planning to put that all together, and I can appreciate that. And I just want to let you guys know how much I appreciate that. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Okay. Thank you so much, Patricia. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, John. Thank you, Maria, for these wonderful presentations, just to give us a snapshot of where we stand during this very crazy time. With that, we'll close out that item. Any, we'll go around the horn. Any matters from council members? George?
Yeah, I have a couple, actually, four. I spoke today on the phone with one of our commissioners, planning commissioners, Josh Lindsay, who's also president of the Strawberry Festival Association. He is really kind of disheartened, like we all are, that, that we're canceling the strawberry parade and, and associated venues. But he and his fellow board members on the Strawberry Festival Association are going to put together a small video montage of past strawberry festivals and maybe some words from the mayor and the council and some other, other community members who've been involved over the years. And they want to put a short video together. They're, they're incurring all the costs, they're doing all that. But I would, I would like for him to be able to work with our, our IT staff and our city staff to maybe be able to broadcast that on Channel 3, to kind of uplift the community spirit a little bit if they want to watch it, you know? So, just, just, it would be nice if he could, you know, if they could actually get that put on the public access. Oh, geez, I forgot the most important thing. Yesterday was my wife's 29, and mine, 29th anniversary, so happy anniversary, honey. Don't want to forget that. Thirty, 31 years together, 29 married, so it's been a fun ride. We did a tribute box on Springdale and Lamson, electric, electrical box we painted. It's a tribute to all the teachers. Again, Jody Williams painted it. It was paid for by the different school PTAs. The district PTA chipped in. School Board Member Terry Rocco and myself made up the rest. Oh, and I forgot to mention our Assistant City Manager. She's, she's chipped into every one of those boxes, so want to give Maria Stipe a shout out there, too. So, the PTA tribute for the teachers, they did right there on, on Springdale and Lamson. But then, the district PTA representative said that she would also like to do one over in, in Kim Wynn's district. So, I'm just putting that out there to Kim. You might want to reach out to the district PTA representative there. Lastly, on May 16th, next weekend, it, it kind of came to our notice that our OC Food Bank is really, really desperate for donations. They, because of the COVID pandemic, their need has gone really dramatically through the roof. The amount of families and, and kids and stuff who need, need food or requesting food. And because of the COVID, also, the donations have gone down. People aren't showing up to drop off food or, or, or cash contributions or that thing. So, myself, and again, Terry Rocco, our school district board member, they've teamed up with the OC Food Bank, the Orange County Mustangs Club, Huntington Beach Car Club. They're going to do an inline caravan to the food bank, pop their trunks, allow the volunteers to pick up the food, and then, they're going to park their cars along the route six feet apart from each other. So, as you drive up, so, we're asking the community from 9:00 to 10:00 a.m. on May 16th, if they want to contribute, they can make the drive up, look at all the cool cars. Please put your donations in your trunk, leave your windows up, pull up to the volunteer, pop your trunk, they'll, they'll retrieve the donations. And, you know, I'd, I'd like to see, you know, a lot of community support and involvement to try to, you know, help the, the people who really need it the most in our community. So, again, that's May 16th. The community is going to be welcomed from 9:00 to 10:00, which is one hour. Normally, on the weekends, they're closed, so they're, they're going to be open for us. So, please come out and, and contribute if you have dry goods, canned goods, boxed foods, or if you want to make a cash contribution. All is welcome, and, you know, please respect the social distancing standards.
Is that it?
That's it.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Make it real quick. Congratulations, George and your wife, on your 29th anniversary and 31 years together. Congratulations on that. I just wanted to thank all my colleagues here on the dais for your support of the Community Workforce Agreement. I get so passionate when I talk about it because I'm directly connected to it as far as being a, you know, graduating from an apprenticeship program and knowing how it changes lives. And what better way to spend public money in our public works than to support people in our own community? So, thank you so much for that. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Tuha? Tuha, you there? Are you on mute? Tuha, are you on mute? Okay. We'll go to Kim Wynn?
Yes, thank you. George, if you could please, yeah, I'm here. Uh, Councilmember, Councilmember Brightigan, if you could please feel free to share my information with that PTA person, I'd be happy to connect with them regarding the, the painting of the electrical box. I'd also like to ask from staff, if possible, that we, one, perhaps maybe I have a misunderstanding, clarify how we're conducting public comment during this temporary virtual norm. But I'd like to request that we have written communications to be read at the three-minute time limit or at least summarized. I think it's important that we maintain transparency and allow for public input during these strange times. I know that a majority of the folks that were, that submitted comments tonight would have been there in person to speak if they would have felt that it was safe to do so or that they would have known that they were, had the ability to show up in person and speak altogether. So, I'm, clarification and maybe work through how that would look like moving forward while we have virtual meetings, I'd really appreciate that.
Thank you. Stephanie?
Yes. First, just in regards to something that Councilmember Brightigan brought up about the Strawberry Festival and the potential video montage, I'm certainly in support of that. I think for any of us, especially those of us that have grown up here in Garden Grove, not having the Strawberry Festival and the parade and all the activities of that weekend is absolutely painful and pretty heartbreaking. So, I think anything we can do to just acknowledge that weekend from the Strawberry Festival perspective and, and all that it means to the community, I think is a great idea. So, first, I just wanted to give a big shout out to Nova Kitchen and Bar. Just a few days ago, I happened to bring up an idea to them about providing some local meals to our essential Gigi workers. And I was so surprised at how quickly they jumped on this idea and ran with it. So, tomorrow and Thursday, Nova Kitchen and Bar... So tomorrow and Thursday, Nova Kitchen &amp; Bar, which is at the Hyatt on our Harbor corridor, is going to be providing meals to Public Works and our police officers and others. And I just want to thank them and tell them how grateful I am for their generosity and their willingness to help our community. On another note, as the trustee for Vector Control, I just want to mention that all signs are leading towards a very bad mosquito season. I think we're going to have a hot summer ahead, and I'm already getting a lot of calls from people that are getting bit. So I just want everyone to take precaution and protect your homes and yourselves now. This is a shared responsibility, so just because your home is prepared and you're ready for mosquito season doesn't necessarily mean your neighbor is. So this is an opportunity to share information, talk to them, obviously, a socially distanced appropriate way, and educate your neighbors and your community about not overwatering, making sure you're dumping and draining your standing water. It's very important, and it'll help us in the long run as we go through this summer and battle these mosquitoes. There's also information on the Vector Control website about this murder hornet that has been, I think, kind of sweeping Facebook as of late. It's real, it's not here, but if you want more information about it and you're concerned about it and you want to kind of understand it from a more scientific way or approach, you can visit ocvector.org for more information. And then finally, I just wanted to really quick, kind of give a PSA or reminder of sorts. I've noticed, just in my travels around town, and I've seen it on Facebook, people are just guarding their PPE in parking lots and in storefronts. And honestly, that's not the responsibility of these essential workers. They're working so hard, they don't need to pick up your biohazard. So please make sure that when you remove your gloves or face masks after the grocery store, the bank, or wherever you've been, please throw it in a trash receptacle there on the property, or perhaps keep something in your car that you can put it in until you can dispose of it at home. I think we want to do everything we can to keep Gigi clean and safe. So that's it. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, can you hear me now?
Yeah, sorry, I was on mute again. Yeah, Tuha, you're back. Tuha said her battery died, so she's back.
Sorry, and now, yeah, I switched to the computer audio. First of all, congratulations to Councilmember George and your wife for the 29th anniversary. Congratulations. I did want to give a shout out to the staff and the labor unions that would be able to pass the community workforce today, and it's been a long overdue. And at the same time, just want to remind everybody that, just echo after Stephanie, is that remind everybody to be, keep a social distance, wear masks, just to protect ourselves and protect our family. That's all I have. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Bowie? You on mute? Or did he drop off?
No, I'm here. I need to unlock my phone before I can unmute it. Yeah, all right. Yeah. Anyway, just since we probably will be on conference call council meeting for a while, I don't know how long it will be. It might be a good idea that we ask our IT department to look into the possibility of video conference instead of just voice. I talked to a lot of our constituents, and they surely missed to see us in action, just hearing our voice. And I promise them that I will bring it up tonight and ask if we can consider a video conference instead of just voice conference. Is that something that we can look into, Scott?
Is Anan around, or is that...
Councilman, you're talking about trying to do a video Zoom call opposed to just the audio version?
Yeah, well, video, so that we can see each other and the public can see each other when they watch it later in video.
Yeah. Let us, we will appreciate that guidance. Let us, I will do some work with the IT director tomorrow. We'll talk about the possibility of trying to connect all the council members via Zoom, and we'll see what the possibilities of that, and I'll report back to the council members about the possibility of that throughout the week.
That would be great. That's all I have.
Thank you. Okay. City managers, Scott Stiles, anything else?
No further, well, let me just say, Mr. Mayor, council members, so appreciate all your patience. We had a lot of work, stuff to go through. At the next meeting, we'll continue these COVID-19 updates that we're doing. You all know this is a changing situation. We get changing guidance from the state and the county, so that means we need to adapt and change as well. And so we'll be working through all that. I know from a financial standpoint, we'll do our fourth of four reports next week, and our last report next week, we'll be talking a little bit about some of the pension issues that we have. So again, we're trying to stay ahead of that and give you as much information as we can. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Legal counsel, any need for closed session?
No, we're not for closed session, but there is no reportable action. I'd be closed session earlier this evening.
All righty. Thank you very much. And with that, we will stand adjourned for this evening. Thank you all for hanging in there. Good night.
Good night, everyone.